Good morning, everybody, and Happy New Year to you all. And welcome to the first Adults Scrutiny Committee of 2023. Just before we start, we'll just go through the housekeeping. There's nobody here that really doesn't know about the fire alarms, so it's straight out through the doors if we need to go. So on that note, I'll move straight on and welcome Wendy Bowkit, our Executive Counselor for Adult Care and Public Health. And welcome, Wendy. And welcome Liz Snead, our Executive Support Counselor for Adult Care and Public Health. I'll give apologies for Glenn Garrard, he's away. And I welcome Derek Ward, Director of Public Health, who will take over the role of answering the various questions that we put to him. On that note, everyone else, and Pam, I welcome Pam here as well, because Pam will lead on all the finance. So on that, we'll go to apologies. So Jess, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, we haven't received any apologies.
Thank you. Declarations of... Sorry. Mike?
Yes, Chair, I'm Chairman. Apologies from Councilor Nicola Clark, due to illness.
Right, okay, thank you for that. So wish her a speedy recovery. Declarations of members' interest, if any members have got any interests that appeared during the course of the meeting, please let us know. We'll move on to the minutes of the 30th of November 2022. To confirm the minutes of the meeting on the 30th of November 2022, as set out on pages five to 10 as a correct record. Can I ask for a proposer and a seconder? Tracy, propose second, Mark. All in favour? Any abstentions or against? No, thank you. Announcements, has anybody got any announcements? No, I think we've all sort of heard the Prime Minister sort of pledged to help address some of the issues of the NHS and discharges, and so we'll follow that, but at least he's got it on his agenda, so on that we must welcome. Wendy?
Yeah, can I just say that obviously in lots of places, adult care and on the discharges is prominent, but in Lincolnshire, I can guarantee you that our discharges are not due to our social care. We have at the moment 1,200 beds waiting for anybody who wants to be discharged out of hospital. So it isn't our fault that, and I'm not saying it is, a lot of people who are very sick, so, but I just wanted to put that on record, that it isn't social care.
Excellent, thank you. So, okay, on that note, we'll go on to the budget proposals for 2023. And I welcome Pam Klipson, Head of Finances for Adult Care and Community Wellbeing, to give us a quick introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, everybody. Just to highlight a few of the key points contained in the report, we are proposing to continue to manage adult care budgets through the six delivery strategies that underpin adult care medium-term financial plan. So that includes adult frailty, adult specialties, newly introduced public protection, Better Care Fund, public health, et cetera. The report contains the directorate priorities for the year ahead in section 2.3. We are proposing an adult care and community wellbeing budget for 2023/24 of just £177.8 million, and that is shown on page four of the report itself. The net increase of £15 million when compared to 2022/23 is driven by three main changes, the first of which is the increase in national living wage, which impacts the rates we pay to our providers across the board, whether that's home care, residential, community-supported living, and we are reflecting the national living wage forecast of £10.42 within those rates. In addition to that, we are reflecting the CPI forecast for the financial year 23/24, which is on average 5.5%. That will peak and trough throughout the year, and we'll continue to monitor that as we do alongside our providers. The risk highlighted in section 6.2 is that the national living wage will not be sufficient to support the workforce challenges our providers are seeing day in, day out. And if you recall, we do have two principles in place, the first of which, where we receive grant funding, we do pass that through where the conditions allow, and the second is the hardship approach we have with our providers for those who are struggling. The second main driver is the continued increase in demand, working age adults in particular, that we see coming through both adult frailties, adult specialties, and into our public protection services. The demand increases are built into our medium-term financial plan, so some of those are factored into that £15 million increase, and that's based on historic trends and the changes that we know are going to face us in 23/24. But with everything else, we don't have a crystal ball, so it is the best to our knowledge working with our budget holders and guys who deliver the services day in, day out. We do have monthly monitoring in place for those budgets we continue to deem to be high risk due to the volume and the volatility, particularly as just highlighted in the introduction from our hospital colleagues in particular. The third element that we have built in is some of the reduction in costs expected through our continued investment. So obviously, we've got DeWitt on the agenda today, broadening that offer and delivering services differently, closer to a person's community, et cetera, does have an impact on the way we set our budgets, and that is all built into our medium-term plan. The Autumn Statement that was announced late last year, followed by the local government settlement, does include three particularly brand-new funding streams pertinent to adult social care. They're contained in section 2.7 of the report. In particular, we've got the introduction of a new ring-fenced adult social care grant. We forecast that to be about £5.6 million coming into Lincolnshire. The broad use, if I can just call it that, that is described at the moment, it will be for tangible improvements to delayed discharges, social care waiting times, low fee rates, workforce, and technological innovation. Don't think there's anything else you could fit into that category, to be honest, but the exact amount and grant conditions are awaited. The second known addition we are expecting is an increase to the Better Care Fund, which looks to be a continuation of the discharge fund that was awarded nationally in December 2022. We expect that to be in the region of £3.7 million for Lincolnshire. And the third is an increase to the social care grant, which impacts adults and childrens. And at the moment, that is how we are predominantly covering those national living wage increase and inflationary increases we've just talked about. The grant conditions for all of those, and the values for those, and the public health grant for 2023/24 are still awaited and should be published within the coming weeks. So there is still some work to do in terms of the detail and how we meet the conditions of those grants and what they can be used for. When adult care £15 million need is combined with the other directives across LCC, the overall deficit as we stand at the moment is £9 million for Lincolnshire County Council. There are two avenues that we can use to close that, non-recurrent reserves with or without support through the ability to increase the council tax aligned with the settlement, and those conversations will go through the usual governance routes of the council. But it should be noted at this point in time that any use of reserves to close that gap is a non-recurrent support function, and the gap that we've got is a recurrent gap. So our approach around continuous improvements, different approaches to support the sector and the people who use our services, is definitely the way we need to continue to work as we go forward, aligned financially to our medium-term financial plan. Those are the key points, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Have we got any questions from anybody at this stage? Mike?
Yes, you talked about the shortfall, and that obviously reoccurring. Are there any thoughts as to how we can try and reduce the shortfall other than going to reserve? I don't know how it would be received, but could we charge our clients more in order to help reduce that? Is there any way that we could approach the NHS to use some of their extra funds to help the care package going on, having been discharged from hospital? Thank you.
Thank you. So from an adult care perspective, we are forecasting balance, because we have quite a number of options that we are doing. None of those are to increase the charges to service users who are approaching adult care. So the charges that we apply are through our charging policy that is aligned to the CARE Act and the government charges, so we don't, for want of a better phrase, Lincolnshire eyes, any of those charges. But what we are doing is looking at different ways of working and broadening the offer. So you've heard a lot, I think, through the strengths-based practice, Chris Evans has been and talked about the improvement programme. We've got some real good news stories around how we have increased the eligibility criteria to access services like reablement care, that we're trying to increase our capacity for home care, and all of that is enabling that prompt discharge. We've got our active recovery beds that opened up in December, that's funded with our NHS colleagues. So again, we're not looking at this just as LCC and social care, we're looking at this with our partners, whether that be in our public protection, public health colleagues, or our community hospitals. So there are a number of things that we are doing that are helping adult care particularly to balance, but there isn't one, there isn't unfortunately one answer that's going to cover all of that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. Derek, did you want to come in?
Yeah, just to add to what Pam was saying, I think a lot of the national focus understandably has been on the discharge end, about getting people out of hospital, which is really important, and Pam's already articulated all the work, as I did, Councilor Bowkit, that we do in that area. Really important that we focus on stopping people going into the hospital in the first place as well, and as Pam's already spoken about, providing a different sort of intervention and an earlier intervention. It might be stopping people needing more complex social care packages, it might be that for those people who've got more complex social care packages, changing the model there, and some of the digital work that we're doing in that space is going to help. It'll be better outcomes for the people of Lincolnshire, but it'll also potentially be cost beneficial in that sense. So there's something about trying to control and change the offer so that people get the services they need where they need them, but also we live within our financial envelope. And I just point scrutiny back to the final sentence of the summary that currently indicates, indications highlight that we will deliver within our financial allocation. That's a pretty unusual position for adult care to be across councils, so we are managing, and a lot of that's because of the preventative aspects that we've had in place for more than five years in the council that is helping us to manage some of those challenges. But there's no getting away from the fact that we've got an older population, as Councilor Bowkit said, we are seeing really sick people going into hospital. This isn't just about people going to A&E who don't need A&E, it's also about people going to A&E who do need a hospital bed, and therefore will need support when they come out. And the model where we've got a separation between NHS provision, which is free at the point of care, and a social care model, will need to be looked at quite quickly, obviously to get us over the next couple of years, but longer term, we need a fundamentally different model, I think.
Excellent, thank you for that. Karen, did you want to come in?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate the comment about charging people more, was probably about day services and that, but I just wanted to say, in terms of charging people for social care in residential homes, my mum was in a residential home for 15 months, and the cost was £36,500. So I don't really think that the scope for making that even higher, that's a big chunk of what she'd worked all her life to accumulate, and it's going to come out of her house, you know, so I think the charges are enough already, actually. And in terms of taking money out of the NHS, you just can't do it. We can't retain staff because they're not paid properly. I got to work just before Christmas to be told that I was the only nurse to look after 18 patients, that's 1-8-18, and we had to scrounge your nurse from somewhere else across the hospital, which left them short, but you cannot keep taking money out of the NHS, there's not enough in it already. This is just so multi-layered and nuanced and difficult, the whole thing, but I think what you're doing, I think this budget, I think this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor?
Chair, I'd just like to come back on what Derek said in terms of accepting the offer, and I accept that in a way, but the reality is, is that nine out of 10 people who make contact in terms of requests for social care get signposted out of the service, they don't end up being, you know, offered a package of support or a service. So only one in 10 people, and I'm a big believer that those nine people, those nine out of 10, actually have got a need of some particular time. And Derek was right in terms of, it's that front end which we need to be concentrating on in terms of preventative type services, so their needs don't become greater, and then they end up entering services or entering hospital. But I question whether we've got those preventative services enough to provide around what the demand is. Certainly, it doesn't feel like it, my part of the county, I don't know what others feel like in terms of theirs, but in terms of my own patch, you know, when we talk to people in terms of wanting or have a need around social care, and they genuinely have, whether that's around debt, or whether that's around just social living, or whether that's around independence, or maintaining properties, whatever, I just genuinely feel that actually there's a lack of services in the north of the county, you might say, different in the east or the south of the county, and that's a challenge for us, I think, in terms of, you know, nine out of 10 people who are contacting that customer services on a daily basis are actually getting signposted out, unless somebody can prove me wrong.
I think, I mean, to be fair, we'd all love to be able to help everybody, wouldn't we, but we certainly haven't got a budget to do that, and I think, you know, even the sort of whole preventative and strategy and services, you know, if you spoke about that 15 years ago, it was, what's that, you know, and today, we are developing, you know, the wellbeing service gathers, more and more momentum, and we're building more and more into it, and I mean, that's one of Derek's roles, is the whole preventative strategy, and I don't even think we've even really touched the start of that in where we will be in 20 years' time, but certainly that has got to be a focus. And actually, self-help, people have got to actually start and help themselves. We're not here to mop up everybody's sort of, you know, you carry on and conduct your lifestyle as you wish, but it comes with a price tag, and if you want to sort of run it in a certain approach, then should the, you know, we can't pick up every sort of aspect just because actually you won't take control of yourself and actually look after yourself. So there is all these elements that come in, or else, and here we are with massive budget pressures, not only in adults, but in every other sector. So I think, all in all, you know, the budget is a really good approach, and you're right, we do need to sort of get better, but the signposting needs to also be supportive so that people can actually go and get help, because we do provide so many services as we keep looking at every time we meet, so. Anything else you want to add, Derek?
I'd just come back to Councilor Lee's point about this being multi-factor, it absolutely is, and there is a recognition, I think, now that we need to look as a country about what we have and how we deliver the model and how we fund the model. The challenge for that is that's obviously going to take a number of years, and it's going to be a transition process. I think from scrutiny's perspective, the positive is that we are already partway down, and I absolutely agree with Councilor Young, we haven't got a perfect preventative offer. And there's primary prevention, stopping people needing anything, but then there's also support for people who need some support but don't need full adult care, and keeping them in their own homes in that sense, and how we fund that. All of that can expand, but we do need that national debate, and we need a new model, I think, coming forwards, including things like primary care that will knock on and secondary care, the whole system needs, I think it's time for a refresh and a reinvigoration, considering that the NHS was set up, you know, post-World War II, it's been quite a while, and we're going to need to get into those conversations. I think from Lincolnshire's perspective is, we have been focused on primary and secondary prevention for a number of years, that is helping us constrain some of the costs and means that we can deliver a balanced budget, but that will only go on for so long, and lots of other councils are nowhere near that position, unfortunately for them, so yeah, it's a national debate, I think.
Thank you. Karen, you want to come back?
Yeah, I know everybody will say it's not for this chamber, but I've said for long, we need a 20-year plan, and it needs buy-in, cross-party, consensual, so that everyone's committed to it and will deliver it, otherwise we'll just continue with this ping-pong thing where you go one way, then you go another way for years and years, and I agree as well. The NHS was set up an awful long time ago. It is time to look at how we deliver again health and social care. Things have changed since that day in terms of social care, but we can only do what we can do from here, but perhaps at the next council meeting, we might propose some sort of a motion about a cross-party approach, because that's what it needs.
Yep. Sarah?
I do agree with Karen, I think for the entire three terms that I've been here, we've been talking about remodelling adult social care, and we are still waiting for that national initiative. And I think what concerns me, I agree with the budget as it stands, you know, I think we're doing the best that we can in Lincolnshire, but I think, you know, the national picture where, you know, we're learning December 2022, the budget allocation, we have known for ages about the problems with discharge. Every single year that I've been on this council, we've been talking about delayed discharge and the problems that it causes. And again, I know that it's a national issue and a national picture, but we still have to have a local response to that. And even on Monday night at a parish council meeting, I was, we were there, and I love my parish councils to absolute bits, but we were talking about potholes and signs, and all that, that's fine, but I just think we need to take every opportunity that we can to then talk about the people in those communities, because I actually do believe that the best help is that community help and that neighbourhood help, and we just need to take, to supplement with the good stuff we're doing in the budget, every opportunity that we have as councillors to get those messages forwards in our communities, just as an add-on.
Yeah, the only thing in relation to that is, and the way I sort of look at it, and the boards and things I sit on, is that I look at the likes of Derek and Glenn, and the sort of NHS colleagues and teams that we have in Lincolnshire, and we've got some very good people at the top of their game, at the head of services, and actually, but the problem is, they're not really allowed the free reins to create innovation, because we are driven by bureaucracy from central government, so a handful of people, in effect, restrict and actually don't give us the reins to allow the skills, the people that we've got, the head of our departments, to actually just come up with trials, pilot schemes, and actually try and claw our way out, but that's the way unfortunately that we are. But back to this agenda and back to the budget, we do need to pass on comments to the executive. Would you like to ask? Come in, Andrew, before I sum up.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to ask Pam a question. This is on the contingency fund, you know, for care providers, where they could draw on this extra money. I just wondered if you could give us a bit of an update, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, you might not have the figures, but just as to how widespread that's been used and how much it's been needed during this last period. Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, that's no problem. So for our, across all of our provider organisations, we've paid out around £200,000 to our prime providers for home care services, and we have paid to date about £400,000 across a range of group and individual residential providers across the board of adult frailty, adult specialties. We have started to see other providers come from our public protection areas as well. We, so in total, to date, have paid out £600,000. The residential predominantly relates to April to September, so we're forecasting a further £400 for this financial year, which takes us into the envelope that we agreed as scrutiny recommended in, I think it was February or March of 2022. There are, however, and that does not reflect the actual costs that our providers are facing, so if you recall, a couple of things we gave them a contribution to, we have not covered their entire costs, and we have seen some quite material cost increases in our residential homes, up to £20,000 more on energy per quarter, just for one group home, and we've seen higher fuel prices in the early part of 22/23, whilst they've come down, they're still not down to our historic levels. We have met with providers again this week, there are a number of providers who are still within their fixed term arrangements, particularly for energy, so they haven't been able to claim yet, but we've got a section coming back to Audit Committee in the rates paper for the February, sorry, Scrutiny Committee in February, where we might be proposing a different use of that fund for 23/24, just to make it equitable, make sure everybody's had that ability to provide that support, but that's, we've spent £600 to date.
Thank you, that's good. Can I just sort of additionally just ask you, you know, the smaller providers, are they able to claim as easily? I mean, I'm just conscious that we didn't want to be missing people perhaps who haven't got the manpower to apply for the money.
Yes, they are able to claim, but I would agree with you, they don't necessarily have the infrastructure to claim. In adult care, we have set up a new process for support to providers, which we will be rolling out as we move to growth, which will hopefully start in March, where we will be able to provide additional infrastructure to those homes, but where they've come to the council to say they're struggling to complete paperwork or find evidence, we have supported them. So yes, it's a range across small and the larger group homes that have claimed.
Thank you, I just, that's good to have that reassurance, thank you, Pam.
And it is in relation to where we provide or work with those services, it's not necessarily just the care homes that are self-funded and have nothing to do with LCC, they have to be involved with LCC. Mark, oh, sorry, Marianne, then Mark.
Thank you, thank you very much. If I might, two lines of inquiry, really. One is, I was really pleased to hear, and I do support the point about we're going to be within budget, or likely to be, and that is due to the hard work that's gone on in terms of getting the prevention and so on, but we did, used to have a little graph that showed cost-effectiveness compared to other councils, and it might be worth having a look at that, just to demonstrate that it's not, we're not within budget because the budget's too large, we're in budget because we're cost-effective, and I think it would be really nice to make that quite clear in the papers that we produce from, you know, from here, and also I'm thinking when we're collecting, when the tax things go out, you know, I would want those messages to put out to my community, to make it clear that, you know, it costs money, but we are certainly not profligate. And the point about, into that comes a point about the 1,200 empty beds, which I was really interested to hear about, and I'm delighted to hear that it's not the fault of social care, that if there's any problem with discharge, and that's really fantastic news, and really well worth, you know, keen to support that, but is there something about a balance? Are we paying for beds that we don't need to pay for? You know, is there a balance there? Have we got it right, is the question. Perhaps that's enough for now, and I'll come to the next one afterwards, thanks.
Okay, so in terms of the cost-effectiveness, we did receive from our external colleagues that we worked with when we set up the transformation programme, that in general, when compared to our other, to our peers, we do spend less, and that was in the summer of last year, and looked backwards. In December, we have now received, slightly later than usual, which is why it's not referred to in the report, just through timings of the papers, we have got our Use of Resources report that's now been published, that is on my to-do list to go through, so again, happy to add that into the financial report that we do bring back throughout the committee agenda, so I can add that in. The second bit around the use of beds is whether we pay for beds that we're not using. We have an open framework, so we don't pay for voids, if a person goes into a bed this week, then we pay that weekly bed rate, depending on the nursing type or non-nursing type, so if the beds are empty, we're not paying for them, but I think that leads back to our other conversation around providers still have to cover their energy bills, their fixed costs, and brings us back into that Provider Hardship Fund that we set up to support just that, so it's not a case that we pay for So it's not a case that we pay for capacity that we're not using, but it is more around meeting our responsibilities under the Care Act of a sustainable market, particularly after the COVID pandemic that we know they suffered significantly through. So that, that.
That's great. Thank you. Can I do my second line of inquiry? The other question was, I had a resident who'd been assessed as needing four visits a day and got none from last March. And when I inquired, it was because I was told there just wasn't, there wasn't anybody available to do that home care. And it made me wonder if there was something in the way that contract works, that some areas are maybe not got the balance right with the about the. I know we made it so that it's localised, so that people don't have trouble so far for home care. That's really good. But when that home care is then used up in that area, you know, we may need some proper mechanism of funding across. When I rang, it is now resolved, I hasten to add. Thank you very much for support from the council. When I rang, it was a question about how much we were paying home, I went into how much we're paying home care workers through, obviously, we're not paying directly through the agencies, but we pay the agency. I gather that's just gone up to something like £20 an hour, depends if it's rural or urban. And I'm just wondering if enough of that is being passed on to the actual social workers. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. So obviously, we changed our rate structure during 22, 23 for home care from the three-tier to the four-tier rate. And that recognised the challenges, the rurality of Lincolnshire. And it, our highest rate is £23.70 for Lincolnshire, for those that are in the more isolated. And that, those rates were generated based on what our providers were telling us they're paying for their staff, they're paying for fuel and infrastructure costs. We added a 5% profit surplus into that for the, for the rates as well. So I am quite confident that the rates we've got in place do reflect cost of delivery. However, there are still volatile areas because when we did that work back in the summer, your inflation goes up and down at the moment. As we know, you know, in household budgets, just as well in the home care budgets, but the fuel is being alleviated. But again, it, there are challenges. We can't cover everything for them. I do think our rates are fair. But again, through our 23, 24 contract negotiations, which, which commence on Thursday this week for a four-week period, we'll be taking the home care rates again, increasing that for national living wage and inflation and seeing where they're coming back from. One of the main challenges appears to be insurance for our home care providers this year, which was quite strange because it was insurance for residential last year. So again, the paper that will come back in February will highlight some of these pressures and our approach to that work. But we have invested a significant amount in the rates for home care. We're also passporting a lot of the discharge fund through to home care and CSL providers that we received in December. And we've got other mechanisms in place round the work we're doing to free up the re-ablement capacity. We've supported even more money going into home care for what we called floating support to help with discharge and help with their recruitment. So I think home care is one of the areas we have put a significant amount of investment in, underpinned by that assurance from that market sustainability work that the rates are at least appropriate and fair for, for what councils should be supporting.
Thank you. But we can't be sure what's being passed on, can we? Or do we put in the contract that we expect?
We can't force, yeah, we can't force. And though they are private individuals at the end, private organisations at the end of the day. The grant agreements that go through do place an expectation that it will be passed through. And a lot of the conversation we've had with our prime providers this morning are, we will pass that through. If they don't sign the grant agreement to commit them to passing that through, then they won't get the discharge funding in particular.
Thank you. That's really helpful. The last thing, inflation currently 10, 10 point, something, 10.4%, and you're proposing 5%.
For the year, for the average, for the year.
Is there a risk? Are you sure that inflation is going to come down?
Oh, no. Oh, no. I would love a crystal ball. No, all we can go on is the, the office, the OBR statistics that come out. And if you see those, they do, it is higher in April and May. They are forecasting it will go down in March next year. But again, we haven't got a crystal ball. All I can say is that this time last year, when we did the same process, we put 4% in our rates and then we increased it throughout the year because it's going to average more at about seven. Yes, you'll get 11. Yes, you'll get, but it'll average out. Again, we're not responsible for paying all of their costs. Don't forget, they get self-funder rates still, they do get NHS rates and they get our rates. So, and they all do vary. We do know there's a delay in the reforms. So at the moment, whether rightly or wrongly, we're not the sole contributors to them. But we do feel we pay a fair cost for those services now.
Thank you very much. That's really helpful.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think some of my questions might have been previously just dealt with in your conversations with councillor Overton because I was going to sort of examine, obviously, the increase in the total level of funding last year to this year is 15 million, as you said. And I was going to sort of try to tease out from you how much of that was down to genuine demand increase in terms of, you know, more users and how much of that was down to inflation and inflationary pressures. Because I'm guessing, because I was going to sort of then move on and discuss about the potential level of contingency risk you might have built in on these numbers in terms of, you know, I'm assuming you've not costed exactly on, but you will have made allowance for some kind of contingency and some kind of financial risk during the year. So I'd say, so I think some of that was probably covered in your discussions with councillor Overton. Because, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, you know, whilst the OBR figures are all there, obviously, you know, different aspects of the cost have a different inflationary impact, I'm guessing, because obviously, we certainly know that what potentially, what the national minimum wage is going to be. So I know potentially what the, that the cost increase is there for wages. I mean, it seems that the fuel prices have peaks and are coming down, whereas utilities haven't as yet. I mean, presumably, a lot of these care providers, can they also apply for the government's help in terms for their, to cover their utility bills as well? So we won't be covering the entire cost of increase in utilities because as businesses, they can seek, so I just, that, that's one. Just sort of perhaps cover a little bit around that. And then obviously, I noticed that, obviously, you know, the reforms have been pushed back by two years. And in their place, we've got a number of grants and new types of grants that have, that have appeared. I mean, I'm presuming that you will have been doing some costing work around what the, the impact of the change in the funding structure is going to be. I know it's been deferred for two years, but I think there's a risk there that, you know, at some point, these extra grants will be kind of rolled out as the new reforms are rolled in. So there's going to be elements of financial risk in the future when that happens. I also noticed that obviously, we're now even more reliant upon the Better Care Fund. That's gone up by nearly another £10 million this year. So it's just one little bit of reassurance around how you see it as well when all these temporary sort of grants are enrolled and we move towards the new funding structure. You know, in, in, in terms of potentially as well where we might be in a couple of years' time. Thanks.
Okay, I think I've got most of those, but please tell me if I haven't. So in terms of rates versus actual demand, you'll see in section 2.6, we've got £11.7 million, which is purely related to national living wage and inflationary increases across all of our services. Now, that on average is 5.5, but we have got some of our contracts, particularly where we have got our coroner's services that are seeing more 6.6% to 7%. So we've got £11.7 million in purely because of the unit cost increase. And we've got £4 million in from the demand that we're expecting additional through mental health services, learning disability services and physical disability services. We are not expecting our residential over 65 services over the year to increase materially. And that is what we have seen in prior years. So that's nothing new. We do have a contingency in place, forecast to be needed, and that is through our adult care reserves. But again, they're only proposals at the moment, depending on the budgetary proposals that come. And our request for that will be included in the February scrutiny paper alongside with our 23, 24 rates proposal. So that you can see in the round, this is what we're expecting to be able to pay. This is how we build up the rates for all of our services, whether it's home care, CSL, mental health, LD, whatever that might be. And then there'll be a contingency that we would like to bring to you as a proposal to say, given we haven't got a crystal ball and given we don't know what's going to happen in the 12 months ahead, we would like to set this aside, very much like we did in February 22 for the 22, 23 rates. The energy from the government is a bit of a challenge. So you'll be aware from our own individual household budgets, we did get discounts on our household budgets as individuals. It wasn't means tested. So individuals who were living in a care home, the individuals received that, but the care homes didn't. We did get quite a number of care homes come to us, asking us to take the money from the individuals to pay to the care homes. There was no legal ability for us to do that. But on the 21st of December, the government did announce a new way of working from January 2023 onwards, which will look at reimbursing the care homes directly. Local authorities will be involved, but exactly how that will work, we are still awaiting. So that should come available in the coming weeks. But yes, the care homes should now be able to, through that route, be available to access that funding, as will individuals who have, who have oil homes as well as the usual gas. In terms of the reforms, yes, delayed to October 2025. We have full modelling underpinning all of our medium-term financial plan. We know where our self-funders are in terms of numbers. We are able to estimate based on the work we've done with our financial assessments team and our ABICA system who will fall into which of the new proposed capital thresholds. So all we have done is moved those assumptions back into our 25, 26 medium-term plan year. So we actually, whilst you've got a year budget in front of you, adult care's medium-term financial plan goes from the 1st of April 2023 to the 31st of March 2027. So we do have that process in place. So we have built the grants in, they are confirmed for two years. So at the moment, our medium-term plan builds in that for two years and then assumes they disappear and the original social care funding comes in. But as you recall from some of the meetings last year, the funding was insufficient, not just for Lincolnshire, but across England, which is why they have been delayed, both from a service user charging and also from our provider basis with that reduction in self-funders. And the last element for the Better Care Fund increase, I think that will continue to increase. I think the Better Care Fund will be used as the vehicle to integrate services far wider than we have done to date. But saying that Lincolnshire does have a significant integration through our BCF, we are one of the largest Better Care Funds in England. But I do think that will continue to grow. The new discharge funding is coming through the BCF. So we know it's going to go up by at least £5 million next year and then some as well, would be my view. But again, all of this BCF schedule, whatever it is, is within the medium-term financial plan. So every pound is monitored both in year and for the further four years, from a provider view, a council view and a service user, customer or person view. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I was, Pam's covered in far more detail the areas I was going to mention. But I think the headlines really, from my perspective, is we have a balanced budget for this year going forwards from a scrutiny perspective. You have just heard the fact that we've got, in my view, some of the best finance people in the country working on this and having a five-year medium-term financial plan is outstanding. I've worked all over the country. We have not had the sort of support that we get from Pam and her team and Andrew's team anywhere else. It is exceptional. There are huge areas of volatility, there are huge areas of unknowns. And as we spoke about earlier, there is likely need to redesign the entire system. But operationally and tactically, day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, I think Pam's just demonstrated the level of expertise she's got in terms of modelling as best we can what the likely challenges are and being able to meet them within the resource envelopes we've got.
Thank you. Okay, I've just got a question myself. What is it, Mark?
Yes, thanks, Pam. Thanks, Derek. Pam, it was a very, very comprehensive reply to my questions. As you know, I'm, I'm, I'm an accountant as well. Based on what you've told me, I've seen your model as well, so I know how thorough and detailed it is. But I'd just like to get that reassurance. And as I say, I concur with Derek's comments. I think our adult social care finance team here is absolutely first-rate, so thank you.
I'll just add one comment to the balanced budget is, yes, adults has balanced its budget and set its budget, but we as a council have to bring it, all the different departments together. And that's where really the term balanced budget sort of comes really to a head when we have to decide how we actually do match it all. One question which sort of, from my point, before I just summarise up. When I look at the sort of various sort of services that we provide in sort of going down into the sort of more detailed and some of those are on the next agenda, the sort of alcohol and drugs and all the other different areas that we provide services for. The one thing that sort of misses in effect that you might be able to look at from a financial point of view is, and I'll just sort of get this right before anyone jumps on me, but it's not about sort of, it's in some sense determining value. I mean, I wouldn't say value for money, but in effect, cost per head. And the reason why I say this, in here, we manage this next year to in effect balance out and set the budget. But it also talks that in two years' time, the public spend is going to get much tighter. And so we are okay now. We have inflation, how much that comes down in two years. But there could be in two years' time, a real, some hard decisions that we have to start to make. And therefore, can we start to look at a mechanism of how we can actually really value some of the benefits that we spend money on? And in effect, later on in the agenda, we talk about £5 million going to a service provider to help with alcohol and drugs and misuse. And there's a lot of money goes into that. And actually, as much as that requires a lot of money, there's another service areas and multiple service areas that also require. But if we, we need to somehow start to align, if we do have to make decisions and actually save money, where do we start to really look? And we could do with, I think, a better way of highlighting some of the costs and benefits in our agendas. When I look at this and we're saying earlier that how do we really value it? Because everything's valuable. Every service we provide is valuable. But if we have to start and actually make decisions, we need perhaps a better mechanism financially. And I wonder if you could look at that, Derek?
Yeah, I do agree with that, councillor Morley. I think we've got to temper that within the framework that there are some statutory, a lot of statutory responsibilities on the council, whether they are the right statutory responsibilities, we have statutory duties we have to discharge. And that then becomes a cost per unit question. And as Pam said, generally as a council, we, we have a lower cost and a middle, if not upper middle of the pack performance. So we are effective within the confines of what we, what we are statutorily required to do, which is the same with substance misuse, actually. We've taken money out over the past six, seven years, as we'll come on to. But, but actually, in terms of the efficiency of the service, that's improved. Whether it's not a gold standard service anymore, but it is a standard, it is a service we must provide. I would say this as a public health person. There's a lot of services that are provided in, in public services, including the NHS, that might be cost neutral or might just be cost-effective, but they're not cost-saving. The vast majority of preventative services are cost-saving. So you spend a pound, you may save six, seven pounds. And that's true with substance misuse. When you look at the entire costs to a system, if you don't help people with their substance misuse costs, then you rack up huge amounts of spend in the NHS, in criminal justice service, in housing, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not, I think we've got to be cognizant of those wider contexts and some of the other, the other sides. And on cue, Simon's in, although we've got the DPH report, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And extra care housing is another, one of those examples that relieves pressures. So to summarise up to the executive, I made some notes. So we sort of, basically, we support the budget put forward. We welcome the programme of transformation and the financial assessments within the budget, accepting that we have inflationary pressures, both cost of living and all the sort of utilities, et cetera. And so we welcome the budget in addressing those. And so we we welcome the budget in addressing those highlighted issues would be number one. Number two, I've sort of got down that we still are very keen to drive the prevention and preventative strategy and services because of the benefits it does over the longer term, in the longer term plan. Three, I've got, we want, we would recommend that we have a measure against other councils to see exactly where we are in terms of our spend versus others, just as a, I know we're all different as councils and we have different cost pressures, but it's nice to see a sort of where we sit in the bigger picture. Four, the contingency fund, are we sort of recommending that maybe that goes, potentially looks at for the year ahead?
Could we maybe use that one in the February paper, Councilor Marfleet? Because that will bring the recommendations of what options we've got for the fund, if that's all right.
Yep, so we'll leave that one out, that's fine, and when I agreed with what I've said so far. And then the other bit I've sort of put is this, well, the sort of, I suppose, this concept that we've just spoken about, the financial, how we start to look and value some of the services if just difficult decisions have to be made. But I think it'd be a good thing to have, looking at services, actually trying to find a measurement that actually values social care and social benefits and preventative. And if you could sort of have a look at a sort of concept model on that, because I think it'll help if we do have to make difficult decisions. And the final one, which I think we should always promote, is self-help and self-responsibility. Anything else? Are we all happy with that? Can I, do we need a proposal in a second, or are we just all agreed?
Really good, just to point that there may be some risks, you know, we've got the risks that that are itemised, but we talked about the inflation levels, you know, there are a number of risks that, so you don't want to make the contingency too small. You know, someone might say, well, we just get rid of that and put it somewhere else in the budget. But actually, you need a good contingency because there's a number of risks in here.
Okay, okay, all agreed? All those in favour? Yep. Anyone against? No, brilliant, thank you, thank you for that, Pam. Okay, so now we move on to item agenda six, the Director of Public Health's annual report twenty twenty two. So Derek, we'll let you lead the way on it.
Thank you, Councilor Marfleet. I'll pull out sort of the key points, I'll assume everybody's had a chance to look through the report and then happy to answer questions. Scrutiny are aware already, because I think this is the fourth or fifth time I've come with it, I think it's the fourth time for a D P H report. Directors of Public Health have a statutory responsibility to produce an independent report, and councils have a statutory responsibility to to publish them. You'll remember that the Chief Medical Officer for England, Professor Chris Witty, produced his annual report in twenty twenty one on coastal communities and the specific challenges that coastal communities have. And that Lincolnshire was one of the case studies in that report, and Chris came out, it was actually before Covid, and and spent a couple of days with us, and and I took him around the county, so he understood the rural coastal challenges that we face. This is my first report, I was Greater Lincolnshire D P H as well, so it also covers North and North East Lincolnshire. And North East Lincolnshire also were a case study in the C M O report, albeit with a with a different approach. So the plan for this year's annual report was to try to consider Greater Lincolnshire, not just Lincolnshire County Council, where the similarities are between the three upper tier authority areas and where the differences are, but with a specific eye on the the coastal, the rural and the urban areas that we have. So that that's sort of the background. What we started with, and you'll see this, let me just check the page number, on page twenty three in the scrutiny pack, it's page four of the D P H report, that 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 map. So we put maps in just to try to make this a bit more accessible, is that generally, and this was sort of our opening position, where Greater Lincolnshire is, is we have some urban centres like Lincoln, Boston, Grantham, as we know, Grimsby and Scunthorpe as well. We have the majority of the county is is rural, and then we have our coastal strips, Skegness to Mabel Thorpe, and then up into Cleethorpes. That that was our opening position. And the travel to work, which are those arrows on that map, areas often describe how people flow between those areas. What we wanted to do is is consider whether that's actually an accurate representation of of how we want to describe Greater Lincolnshire with the sole purpose really of helping the people of Lincolnshire and the people who provide services for people of Greater Lincolnshire understand the challenges of the geography in a different way, and start to consider whether the services that are delivered are delivered to meet those challenges. And so if you go on to the next page, page twenty four, what we did is we broke down Greater Lincolnshire to our lower super output areas, which is the sort of smallest geography that we've got decent data on. And it's it's a map that looks like, it's figure two, it's mostly green, it's got some purple, it's got some red on, and it's got some white bits around it, okay? And by breaking it down to the lowest area and then building back up, and I'll describe how we did that in a second, what we found was actually we've got four different broad areas that we could categorise Lincolnshire, Greater Lincolnshire in, that are important when we think about health and health and care services and actually broader services. The first is urban centres, and and places like Lincoln and Boston are urban centres. And the areas around those urban centres are the the connecting areas, so they're the white areas. And that's where people move into and maybe work from or get their services from those urban areas. We then have a second sort of urban area, which is really important, I'll come on to describe why in a minute, which is urban industrial areas. And and they are Grimsby, Scunthorpe, Gainsborough. And and they are absolutely urban, but the history of those places is different, and the health and care needs of those places is therefore different. We then get the majority of the county geographically is is rural, as you would expect with market towns. And then we have some very discreet coastal communities. And one thing, if you want to compare and contrast between the the two maps is, for all of us who know Skegness, well, you you know that Skegness is on the coast. It does have a a fringe around it where people will move in to and out of Skegness and get their services from Skegness. But when you go up the coast, you actually go through quite a significant area of rural countryside, don't you, before you hit Mabel Thorpe? And then in Mabel Thorpe, it's a very discreet tightly tight community of a coastal community. And then again, you're into the countryside, and you keep going north. And actually, our analysis has suggested that Cleethorpes is actually, it it's not coastal. It's tied too closely to Grimsby and the services in Grimsby. Now, that in and of itself, I thought I was going to get told awful lot by my by my colleagues in North East Lincolnshire, but but there was a general acceptance that that's the case. I would argue that most health and care services do not recognise that. And that's important in terms of how we deliver services, which I'll come on to. So that just a little flavour of what we thought the model was, and actually through our analysis, what the what the what the population looks looks like. So just to break down those four communities in a little bit more detail. Our urban centres, like Lincoln, predominantly the population younger than average, generally economically active population, so so they're they're in work. Generally, and these are generalisations, I absolutely accept that, and we've got the data that will show that the variation in in somewhere like Lincoln is is huge, obviously. But broadly speaking, lower than average levels of deprivation, generally living in good good housing conditions. The communities who live in our urban centres have good access to health and care services. However, health outcomes in some areas are worse, particularly around cancer, cardiovascular disease and death by suicide. And some of the reasons for those are probably linked into things like air pollution, poorer access to green and blue space, and higher access to things like high high density of fast food outlets or or alcohol. So there 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 are pros and cons to to living in urban centres. But if you look on, again, just flicking between on page six of the D P H report, page twenty four of the scrutiny papers, you'll see there there's a multi-coloured box with population, income, work and education. And you'll see there that that's a summary for our urban centres, generally working age population, decent levels of education and and good employment. And if you scroll down onto the next page, the blue box index of multiple deprivation, what such, what that shows is that of the super, lower super output areas, only about sixteen percent are in the most deprived quarter of the population. So generally, a more affluent population that that are in employment. If you then go on to our urban industrial communities, which are across the north and include Gainsborough, like urban centres, generally younger than average, good access to services and support infrastructure. But the urban industrial communities are particularly challenged by historically embedded extensive deprivation. Fewer opportunities for higher education. In 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 Lincoln, obviously, we've got two two universities, that's not the case in terms of Grimsby and Scunthorpe. And also, the urban industrial centres generally have heavy industry as as the the employment background. And that plays out in some of the preventative, the preventable ill health and early mortality that the north of the of Greater Lincolnshire sees. There are opportunities, though, specifically around the devolution deal, and some of the opportunities of trying to tie in Northern Lincolnshire into some of the work that we as a council are doing with the university. We have a memorandum of understanding and a delivery plan. And and Northern Lincolnshire, both North and North East Lincolnshire are really keen to to develop that from from their perspective, in terms of access to to those higher education sectors. You'll see there generally on the the coloured four boxes, quite similar to to the urban areas, slightly lower employment rate, but but not massively. If we then go on to coastal communities, this this is where the 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 changes really become more obvious. Coastal communities challenged by an aging population, and you'll see in the population map there, a third of the population roughly are sixty five or above. Pockets of considerable deprivation, and as a result, on average, local people have more complex health and care needs than the wider Greater Lincolnshire population. Meeting those more complex needs is also more challenging because of the geographical isolation of our coastal communities. We all know that, but we're actually, we've got the data here to demonstrate that. Not made even more complicated by the fact that obviously they're on the coast, and so services are are only available in a hundred and eighty degrees rather than three hundred and sixty degrees, which is which is pretty important. There are some key benefits, access to green space, access to blue space, the sea and and some of our rivers and lakes, again, is is really positive there in our coastal community. And things like the Campus for Future Living in Mabel Thorpe is is really important in terms of how we deliver health and care services in those remote coastal communities. We have to fundamentally change our service delivery models if we need to to meet the needs. The other thing I'd pick out for coastal communities, if you look at those four boxes, the four coloured boxes, less than half of the population in our coastal communities are are actively in employment, forty five percent, as compared to three quarters, or seven, seven out of ten in our industrial areas, so so in our urban areas. So that's quite a significant difference. When you flip that into the fact that we really struggle to recruit to our care service providers and then to our N H S providers in the coastal communities, that for, half of that population, a a good proportion of those people could be in employment because the the reason that they're not in employment is they've got limited long term conditions. They're of working age, but they might have a bad back or or bad knees. They might have cardiovascular disease that needs support or asthma. And actually, with the right care services, delivered in the right place, they could become economically active. And that obviously is a win win, because we we increase our potential workforce in those areas. Those people increase their incomes, and obviously they pay tax on that income, and that then also increases the overall income to to the exchequer. So so there's real opportunities, and I'll be presenting the these slides to the chief execs of the N H S this afternoon, actually, and see where that conversation goes. And then finally, our rural and market towns are actually a bit of a mix, generally made up of older middle aged and middle class populations, highly dispersed across the county, we all know this, especially through scrutiny. Communities are generally more affluent, although there are pockets of significant rural deprivation, as as we all know. There are specific challenges, for example, energy inefficient properties, access to health and community services is poorer than average, although the health of the population is generally better because of that more affluent population. Specific opportunities around improving health and wellbeing in 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 these populations are around land management and improving digital infrastructure, real opportunities there. And also to to inwardly attract people into Lincolnshire, we've seen this with Covid and people working from home more. Obviously, that's, there's an opportunity to attract more affluent people into the area, but the flip side of that is is driving increasing in-house costs and local people struggling to to buy houses. So there's always a balance there. But one of the key challenges we've got from a health and care service perspective is is changing our service delivery model so that people can access services. Now, one slide that isn't in in the pack, but but it's in in one of our 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 background papers is about health outcomes data. And what that shows broadly is that coastal communities have real challenges around all aspects in terms of their health outcomes and in terms of their access to services. Rural and market towns generally good health outcomes, but poorer access to services. Urban centres generally green across most areas, although obviously with with specific challenges. And urban industrial areas, good access to services, but poorer health. So so it's it's quite a mixed bag, but it was another way to look at our four characteristics and see whether they played out, and generally they they did. So that's the overview of the D P H report. The 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 recommendations really are about building on the C M O's report. And one of his recommendations was for places that have coastal communities to understand their populations better. And and the 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 report hopefully will help everybody understand better, but also to try to make it understandable for the general population and for service providers so that they can can consider how they deliver their services. And the fact that one size will not fit all in a in an area as as large and diverse and dispersed as as Greater Lincolnshire. And then to take the these recommendations and this level of thinking, along with some of the other Director of Public Health annual reports that we've done around things like global burden of disease, into the conversations that we've got to have with our health and care partners about what a good model for Greater Lincolnshire needs to look like. Now, that might be constrained by national debates, but we can also start to think what we want and what we think would work in Greater Lincolnshire, as and where national government moves towards more opportunities, and also to feed this into the devolution conversations as well. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Derek. I'll give you some credit, that it is a very good, nice reading report. And, you know, and you certainly each year keep reinventing and redesigning, and you're not sort of in a mould, and it's a good read. I think the one thing when I've sort of gone through this report is that in some sense, you are looking at it as a snapshot in time, and which is right to do so. But in in, the thing is, historic and history is actually why we have half the mess, for instance, with like coastal issues. And it's because in some sense, the coast was the convalescent homes to so many issues. And although we talk about coastal, in fact, a lot of our coastal communities are actually from the industrial areas of the past. And actually, with that, they brought their problems because actually they came to the coast because it was a sanctuary. It was better air quality, and then that's what, you know, in the old days of mining, go to the coast of Lincolnshire and help your lungs and get that sea air. And in effect, we've sort of kept them there. And also, it it was a great escape, if you have an issue, to actually go to the coast and actually have a nice environment to be in without all the pressures. And in some sense, and there wasn't the the opportunities, but as long as you could get round that. And often, there wasn't, sometimes there was also not the will to look for opportunities. I mean, I used to work behind the coast. I mean, I used to work behind the coast, on the coast, so I sort of know the coast really pretty well. And I think you're right, but the access now to what we are providing over the last period of time has got a lot better. We have identified it and in Mabelthorpe, when I go to Mabelthorpe, there is a lot more service provision there than there ever has been. And so we are on the right path. I think when I sort of look at it and like agriculture, we've got affordable housings all over because that was needed in agriculture in the days when we employed masses of people. But of course, you don't need masses of people on a farm nowadays unless you're in the south in the vegetable worlds, but in the wolds and the marsh, those sort of large employers have gone and so, and actually, but the housing stock's still there. It was just badly built and cheaply built in the days without a lot of insulation and, you know, and we're sort of left still today suffering from the past decisions of sort of cheapness, cheap builds and all the other bits. I think one area that sort of, that I find that perhaps is missing in your sort of overview here is which areas that we can help with, planning. We actually have all the planning authorities within our remit and actually there is so many opportunities that locally and local investment can help to create better jobs. Rather than relying on the multinationals or big cinemas to come in, there's a lot of money often in all our communities that actually want to reinvest, but planning makes it awkward and hard and actually doesn't often be the innovation that it can be as a key driver because we are sat on planning. We can actually stimulate more growth in business locally by those sort of tools. And I think the, on that as well, education, you know what, I'm back to this self-responsibility. If you live on that coast, there is wonderful walkways all along, the promenades, wherever you live around, there's countryside, there's every, you know, Grimsby's got great promenades leading, you can go all the way through into Cleethorpes, you know, there are all those areas. How much are they used? Actually not very much, which comes back to the sort of self-responsibility approach that we need, you know, it's down to people to do it rather than us to spoon-feed. And as for your fast food, you can go to McDonald's and get a salad, you can go to Greg's and get a salad, you can get, and actually if you have a Doner kebab, it's amazing how much salad is put in your Doner kebab. So, but it comes back to education, what is right and what is wrong? Because all that's on the back of a label is your salt and sugar content, doesn't tell you how many vitamins and minerals you're having in that diet, doesn't tell you whether actually your Doner kebab meat's better for you than a pure steak meat. So I think education still should be fundamentally a part in this and I think, and the self-help, self-responsibility is always my key driving. And I think some of our education establishments can improve their offer by actually setting their timetables better because my son goes to, in full-time education and actually they're expected to travel across Lincolnshire for two hours and then come back and then expected to go in the next day for another two hours. We don't make it easy, I think at times for full-time education. And I think there's more that could be done within our education establishments to really make it much easier to get our youth back into full-time education and be beneficial, rather than dragging it out over five days, doing an hour here and an hour there each day, when you've got to catch trains and all the cost structure that can go into that. There's more that can be done. So I think education, planning and self-responsibility would be my sort of key areas to support, to be bolted into what actually I think is very good all round. And you certainly have hit the themes and threads very good. So that's my bit over. Right, I'll go Andrew then Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, Derek. It's really interesting, this report. I just want you to justify something, which I know you'll be able to. The coastal communities have a population, it says here, of 29,000. Rural and market towns over, almost a third of a million. Now, I represent a rural area and don't necessarily feel part of a market town. So my question is how, you've lumped us all together in a third of a million and as important as the coastal community issues are, that's 29,000. And I just want you to justify why you've put us all in this big group and kept a smaller group separate as one of the four areas. Do you see what I'm getting at? I don't want it to come across as criticizing the coastal communities being in the separate group. Thank you.
Yeah, I completely understand that. We could have separated out the rural from the market towns, but when we went back to the first principle of the report, which was to look at service provision and how to categorise Greater Lincolnshire in a different way, given we've got North, well, I have got North and North East Lincolnshire as part of the mosaic now. It did make sense for rural and market towns to go together because of that access to services, whether it's GP practices, dental services, if you can get them, and it does highlight a lot of the challenges there and some of the other models. But it's a fair challenge. I think when you look at the analysis though, whilst it's a small number of people in the coastal communities, in terms of service delivery and the challenges that the CMO report picked up and that we highlighted as part of the analysis here, it is discreet and separate to coastal, sorry, rural and market towns. And if you go back to the map, the hinterland around Skegness before it goes into rural, I think most people would accept and have experience of that. The difference being that between Skegness and Mabelthorpe, there is a lot of rural and actually when, one of the targets for this is the primary care networks and it's a different primary care network that covers that bit of the county. And then it's the coastal PCN that covers Skeg and Mabelthorpe. So the audience for this, it makes sense to as well. We could have cut it lots of different ways, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And obviously the percentages for the coastal communities are high on some of these figures, but obviously of a smaller number of people to start with. And I think that's probably worth saying because the smaller percentage in my area may be just as many people as in a coastal community.
It's absolutely true, but the argument in the paper is the requirements of that smaller number of people will be different and how the service is delivered will need to be different as well. So it's a function of those three things, I think.
Yeah, I knew you were going to say that and that's fine, you know, that's, I understand all of that. And I could just pick you up on the fast food outlets that Hugo mentioned. I'm not sure if it was you or cartoon you in the video because I was watching that, which is very good. And about the density of fast food outlets in urban centres. And I'm not, you said something needed to be done about that. I'm not quite sure what could be done about it because we still have fast food outlets in rural areas and I'm not sure that that is probably such a big issue being more of them than what we would have in a rural area. Thank you.
So I think it picks up Council Marfleet's point about planning regulations. So there are opportunities for alcohol, for example, there were alcohol saturation zones whereby local planning organisations, obviously generally be district councils in this scenario, can say, we have a saturation within a small area of licensed premises and therefore we're not going to grant another licence unless one comes out. So you're not increasing. Now, there are areas of the country that have done that with fast food outlets and you can do it around schools, for example, where you can say, we're not going to, we're not going to agree to any further fast food outlets within our planning regulations if there's a school or we're going to, we're going to put stipulation that says it won't be open at lunchtime. So you don't get children, people coming out of school going there at lunchtime, but it's available for the community of an evening. So there are opportunities and I think Council Marfleet's point is really well made. It's not within my gift to make those decisions, but partly my responsibility to raise those questions and to then explore with our district colleagues and through the county council with our, with our environmental team, what the options are.
Thank you and thank you, Derek, for this. It's really thought-provoking, it's great, thank you.
Just on your fast food, everyone can sit now with a WhatsApp, with an app and actually just order the food, get the shopping delivered and don't even venture off the sofa. And then we wonder why we've got some of the issues. But right, I've got Sarah, she's gone. Rob?
Thanks, Chairman. Yes, a very interesting report. The one thing that struck me was in terms of the coastal areas, and you touched on the historic associations with the industrial areas round our region, such as Nottinghamshire, Leicestershire and so on. I recall one thing that I was struck by when I was working in mental health was the number of people who suffer from social isolation, very often a couple would move from one of those areas to the coast. Sadly, one of the partners would die and that left an individual on their own and that increased demand on mental health services. I don't know, do you have any data on sort of mental health prevalence of mental health issues on the coast in relation to, say, the older population or generally?
Thank you, yes, yes, we do. It's, it's okay, it's not brilliant. And obviously, one of the things that I'll be picking up with Sarah as the chief exec of the Mental Health Trust is service delivery models and how that works. From a council perspective, we've got the wellbeing service, for example, offer supporters, you'll know, that's one of the criteria where death of a partner will open up access to the wellbeing service. And that then feeds into that sort of preventative offer to try to help people and reconnect them. I mentioned earlier, primary care networks. We've talked here before around social prescribing and the fact that primary care networks have a responsibility around social prescribing. And a lot of that's about connecting people up to their communities and making sure we support our voluntary and community sector to support people in those scenarios, rather than trying to fix that through public service intervention. And hopefully the DPH report will stimulate exactly some of that conversation. So we've got some data, but it needs to be expanded and we need to have that discussion with our health service providers really.
Okay, thank you. Right, Sarah, welcome back.
Sorry about that, Chairman. Derek, in terms of the market towns, no surprise that that's where I wanted to dwell. It's interesting you're reading and I think my comment would be completely support what you're saying about access. Nightmare in terms of primary care in particular. But also as well, you did touch on it that there are pockets of poverty and deprivation in those market towns and that's really what I want to focus on because there is quite rightly the focus on deprivation on the coastal strip because in terms of a numbers game, that's where the focus is on. But the deprivation in our market towns is penacious, it's intergenerational, housing stock is a massive, massive issue in terms of some of the quality of our stock of our social housing providers. And so, yes, I agree with the thrust of what you're saying, but it doesn't mean to say that we mustn't take a strategic approach to those issues within the market town. Because in fact, some of the strategies that we may decide to use for our coastal communities, because in fact, yes, the communities are different, but the problems are the same. There could actually be a lot to learn from what the interventions we've put in with our coastal communities that we can then transpose into those market towns, those really, because those pockets are, I mean, you know, I've lived, breathed and worked it now for three terms and I've never seen an initiative to focus on those key deprivations of poverty in Louth. And I would love to.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. There's always going to be a loss of that granularity when we're trying to pull up the arguments into four broad areas. And what we've got, and we'll publish on the website as well, is a technical annex that has maps that go down to the lower super output areas and show a lot of what you've just described within our market towns and in fact in some of the industrial areas and our urban areas. So, you know, parts of Lincoln, the housing stock is incredibly challenged. So it's all there, but we've lost some of that and I think that's a fair, a fair challenge to try to make it accessible. The conversations and obviously my job is then to go in and articulate that level of detail with our district councils, with our NHS providers so that they understand if a model works in parts of Skegness, actually that model will work in parts of Louth that need the same sort of intervention. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, but there will be some standard models that need to be applied in different places as required.
And what I would also ask as well, Derek, is that that engagement as well as with the districts, is with the parishes and with the town councils, because I know they're difficult, but in terms of solutions they could have, if they chose to, have a real key role in this and be real key drivers of change.
So Council Willie and myself are going to go out to all the districts because we haven't done it with Covid, but we've done that a few times to take the DPH report and also what we're doing around the NHS side of the portfolio, to have conversations with our district colleagues and we'll flag it up there about the need to go even within districts. And we've got the analysis, we've got the data and districts know their areas really well as well, so it'll align with that.
Okay, thank you. Marianne, then Tracy and Mike.
Thank you. I was thinking, why aren't we looking, in the past, we used to look at the type of illness, you know, and we'd look at, you know, this is the most cost-effective thing to resolve. And so we'd work on a type of treatment or support or encouragement for self-responsibility that would improve that condition and therefore save the biggest costs and save the most lives, get the biggest health improvement. And now we're moving more towards where people are. So it's a different approach. So we're not necessarily looking at the worst individuals and how best to help the health of everyone. We're now looking at where are people living and do we need to provide a service in that particular area? So it's a different approach and the thing that worries me is that, I mean, I can see the sense, you want to know where to put the services, but what worries me more is it's actually about where you want to take them away from, not you personally, but somebody who's looking to reduce the costs. And I do worry about the loss of GP services in rural areas. We've got several, you know, we've got some big concerns in our villages where the local GP service has been such a lifeline and the people running those are actually very concerned about whether they have a future or not. So I am really worried that this could be used to say, well, there's very few people living in the rural areas, they're reasonably healthy and they got plenty of money, only 7% deprived, so they can look after themselves and will just reduce, I would say reduce, I know they call it heaven spoke, so they're not calling it reducing, but it does mean that there was a surgery and now there isn't. And for most people who live in that area, it looks like a reduction. So I think the, I am very, the point I'm getting on to really is that we are looking at the different areas now, should we put, should somebody, not me, but the people higher up, should they put money in the coast where there's, or should they put money here or there, services here or there? I mean, I hope that this can be used to demonstrate that the rural areas do need to maintain a local service. You've not talked very much, at least maybe I just haven't seen it, about transport, you know, and the costs and difficulties of emergency transport that we've got at the moment, for example. And it means that if you don't provide services closer to where people live, there will be more serious problems as a result, there will be deaths as a result. I didn't like to say that, but you know, if you haven't got the service, you will get worse problems. And that's why I hope that this can be used to really demonstrate that you want local services throughout those rural areas as you do in the urban areas. Thank you.
Just on that though, you see, I live in a rural area and actually, where do we go? We go to the market towns and that's why I think the market towns linked with the rural areas is the right combination. You know, you don't get a Tesco's or a food shop in the rural area, they're all in market towns. Everybody, and as we found out with Louth, all the surrounding people commute to Louth or they go to market, or they go to Spalding. You know, they all head in, in fact, round me, there's three GP surgeries, one in the rural area because the village is big enough. One in the rural area because the village is big enough to sustain it. And then you've got one in Market Raisin and one in Louth. So the provision is there. In fact, the only thing that perhaps really wants altering is the pharmacist to be able to actually deal with more individuals without having to go to a GP. If you know you've got a sore throat or an ear infection, you don't actually need to necessarily see a GP. You just want something that's going to treat it. And the pharmacist is the answer. But Derek.
I do get what you're saying about pharmacies and we do have pharmacies. But you said you've got a rural practice there and I am concerned that the size that's required to support a rural practice has, is changing, which will mean that you may have one now and you may not have one in the future. My concern is that we have, where we have people coming from Witham St Hughes, you know, three thousand dwellings there planned. Half of them are there now. Those people are getting on a bus which has to stop at the villages on the way. And spaces like Eagle, they're getting on a bus to go into town to go to a GP surgery into the edge of Lincoln. And that's the way it is. They can't have a surgery there. But it worries me that if that was repeated in other parts of the country. Transport, you might think it's no problem when you've got a car, you think that's no difficulty. But if you think you've got a sick child, you've got another child at home, one that's got to go here, one that's got to go there. And you've got to take them all on the bus because you can't leave any of them behind. That's not easy. And then you get to the surgery and you've got to wait an hour for the bus back. You know, it's, it's not, it's not easy at all if you haven't got a car. And that's why I think it's, I know we've done voluntary transport as much as we can, but that has its limitations too. So I do think it's actually really important to get the service as close as possible to where people live.
Derek?
I, I agree that no one report's ever going to help the totality of what's required. If you remember a couple of years ago with the Global Burden of Disease Report, that was very much focused on the disease profile. So, so very much what councillor Overton was talking about. And what that picked up was that the things that people in Lincoln should die from are the things that generally you'd expect. Cardiac heart disease and, and cancers. But the people, the, the things that people live with and have to deal with weren't what we expected necessarily, are things like bad backs, bad necks, you'll remember headaches, migraines, that, that side of it. So I guess, I guess what we're trying to do with the reports over, over time is allow our providers of services to overlay them together to see different parts of the picture. So, so you can look at the geography, you can look at the disease profile, you can look at the ages, you can look at the income. But all of those are necessary when we deliver services. I think in terms of service delivery models, the point of this paper is, is that point about one size doesn't fit all. Everybody should have access, but how they gain access will need to be a function of where they live and the environment within which they are living and also the health needs that they have. And that's something that I don't think as health and care providers we necessarily pick up. So it's, I guess it's trying to stimulate that discussion within that wider context. But absolutely, it's, it's not, it's, it's not trying to present a perfect solution. Maybe, maybe that'll be the next, next year's DPH report about what it should look like rather than what it is.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Thank you Chairman. I've kind of finding myself agreeing with a lot of points that, that quite a few people are making. I, I think councillor Key in regards to the rural and the market towns being completely different in what they need and what they have and, and all of that is very true, although I do agree with, with obviously your response back to that. My division is Hole Beach, so you have the town, but then I also have Hole Beach and Marks and Hole Beach Bank. So it, it's, it's both of those kind of areas that we have. The Call Connect Bus that you reference in there, the voluntary car service, all of those things are, are absolutely key. And I again find myself agreeing with councillor Overton. I, I feel that this report is good, but it could be used to, to benefit other areas and take things from some of the rural. And I don't want my rural areas to always need to use Hole Beach for everything. I think it's important that they can access. Which is why I'm really surprised in the recommendations, I find them a little woolly, to be honest with you. And actually, why are we not explicitly saying as one of our recommendations that we are going to work extremely closely with the transport services within LCC, with housing in district, be really clear and, and set it as, as literally a task that we need to increase this communication with these other departments within LCC and wider than that as well. Because to me, it's the only way that change will actually happen by not working in silo. Thank you.
Um, it's, I don't know whether this is a positive for me or a negative, but we, what I've tried to do, bearing in mind that this is a, a director of public health annual report, which I've got statutory responsibilities, right? It's not a council report, if you like. So it's not something that's going to executive or full council. And I can't directly influence spending that way. I would do that through other mechanisms with the Public Health Grant as Pam was talking about, or, or the wider council spend. What I can say is that I've had that criticism, but a constructive criticism about being more direct from all three councils actually and from the councillors. And, and the way that I'll articulate that is in the conversations with other exec directors, other, the chief execs in the NHS, in our, in our care providers about what the art of the possible is. I think directors, director of public health annual reports are there to stimulate a discussion. And then hopefully through that discussion, we come up with proposals. And then we'll go through the, the correct council or NHS mechanisms to get approval for those, those proposals, I guess. So I guess I'm trying to be quite diplomatic here, but also raises debate.
Mike?
Thank you Chairman. An interesting report, lots of data and information. But I've got, I don't know whether it's an observation more than a criticism or a complaint. You've provided all this data and all the schemes and they're good to promote good health and activities across the whole of the, the area. And obviously, health impinges or gets affected by day to day actions and committees and strategies. I know it must be difficult for you to know which should be given the priority funding or the support in order to gain the best outcomes in a particular sector or area so that that can then cascade to other areas and improve that as well. Have I made myself clear or have I muddied the water?
No, I, I, I think so. And I think it comes back to the previous conversation when we were talking about the budget, about what, what's going to give the biggest return on investment. And I think that's a function of a few things. One is that what we have to do statitarily, and I will come on substance misuse services, for example. And if we constrain our thinking around substance misuse services to just council funding and don't recognise the benefits in terms of saved costs to the NHS, to social care, to housing, to, to criminal justice, then, then we're missing a trick there. So, so that's part of it. I think a second bit is just picking up councillor Carter's point about overlaying some of the geography because the, the requirements and the need isn't the same everywhere. And then my third point, I'll say this as, as the public health person, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. Not only is that, you know, a, a quote from Ben Franklin, it's also demonstrably true. And we have the evidence base that if we invest in preventative interventions, anywhere between, one pound will save you anywhere between three and 15 pounds. Pretty well no NHS service will do that. They'll be cost effective, but they won't save you money. The problem we've got is we've got a finite budget that's struggling to keep up with the demand already. So we're not going to stop doing NHS interventions that save people's lives. We, we need to consider how we fund those preventative services. So I think it picks up, I think your comment picks up quite a few of the, the, the conversations we've already had. Absolutely valid.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, this is kind of perhaps picking up on, follow up to the conversation you're having with councillor Parkin. And also your comments about working with district councils. Because I'm thinking, you know, I, I represent a division in Grantham. And the division I've got, I would say two thirds of it is some very wealthy villages in the Vale of Beva. And I've also got Dealsfield Estate in Grantham in, in, in my division. Now I looked at, it was the index of multiple deprivation. Now if I look at, say, say the village of Barrowby where I live in, in my division, that in terms of that, that's in, in, in the top 20% in terms of income and whatever in the country. I then look at the Earsfield Estate, which is less than a mile away, just the A1 separates it. And all of that's in the lowest 10% in terms of social deprivation. So even within my division, there are some, and I notice that when I go around my division. I also notice it in terms of the type of casework I, I receive. I get different types of casework from the villagers than I get from the towns. Completely different. Recently as well, I was also helping with a by-election for South Castlevan in Grantham, the Somewolfram's ward. I was helping my wife on that one. And within there, that has got some quite wealthy parts of Grantham, but also it's got all the housing in the Grantham town centre. Lots of houses in multiple occupation, lots of houses where there are people of different nationalities in there. And so, so even within Grantham itself, which, which you've sort of, sort of got down there as an urban town, it's very, very different in different, even within different parts of the town. So I certainly welcome your, your view that you need to work with the districts. But I would say work with your district councillors as well and your county councillors because they know their divisions, they know their wards, they know. Again, as, as, as my wife is now finding, as the, as the new councillor for Somewolfram's in Grantham, the casework she's getting from different parts of her, her ward are different if you're in the town. The bits she's getting back plus the bits she's getting from, from some of the wealthy areas. So, 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 so please use your district councillors as well, use your county councillors because they, they will know from their casework and stuff that they're working on that even within towns and, and, and the hinterland around towns, there are widely differing needs, differing needs and requirements. Thanks. That's all. Just more of a comment rather than asking a question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I believe we've got Colin Matthews online that wants to just come in and ask a question. I mean, Colin, as you know, has got one of the most perfect areas with everything and all the provisions that you could imagine. So wonderful walks, coastline, you name it. So welcome Colin.
Thank you very much Chair. Good morning and happy new year to you all. I, I wanted to thank Derek for this report and, and the very nice things that he talks about blue space and green space on our fantastic wild coast, as he, he highlights it in his report. But, but I particularly want to thank him for bringing the data that supports the supposition that actually we're struggling a bit on this coast. We do have a phenomenal number of visitors. Derek has picked up the issue of static caravans and elderly people living in static caravans and in not acceptable conditions. But I just wonder if Derek can comment on the irony that the area probably with greatest need in the county, without exception, has the worst services in the county at primary care support and indeed through mental health support and things like that. Where he says, you know, an ounce of prevention is, is better than a pound of cure or whatever the quote was. Let's invest a bit more in Mablethorpe please, so that we can ease the burden on our services here. So well done Derek for bringing up the data. Now how do we drive people to, to make that investment that will save us all time, money, cost and effort in the future and make this beautiful place easier to live in?
Thank you Derek.
Thanks councillor Matthews. In the report, we mentioned, for example, the Campus for Future Living, which is, I guess, in terms of how to drive different service delivery models. Because what, what we've heard is everybody can make an argument as to why the area that they represent is going to be different. And I agree with, with all of those arguments and the data does support it. What we've got to do is unless we have a fundamentally different model where there is significant new investment nationally and therefore locally, we're going to have to use the resource we've already got, but, but use it differently. And so new service delivery models, which is part and parcel of what we're trying to do with the Campus for Future Living, how we deliver in, in coastal communities and how we meet the different needs of the different places is, is really the core argument of, of the report. It's the core argument. It doesn't provide the answers because clearly that, that will be a, a conversation we have to have across Greater Lincolnshire. I think there are very particular challenges in, in somewhere like Mablethorpe. In the centre of Grimsby, there are very different, but equally as difficult challenges. And, and you can pick any area really and make the argument in that sense. We've got the data, we've got the argument. I think now it's about looking at how we deliver our services differently.
Thank you. And on that note, I thank you and congratulate you on your first Greater Lincolnshire report, which is a, you know, that's a great achievement in itself. Just one real sort of final question really. How did our fellow other councils, did they all sort of like what they've seen? And, and also would you like to just introduce Simon next to you? Because I think Simon's done quite a bit of work in this as well, hasn't he?
Well, Simon's here for the, the next item, so I'll introduce Simon.
His writing is so small under his name, I can't actually see what he's actually titled it.
So Simon's here for substance misuse, that conversation. But what I did want to do is just, just say thanks to John for turning me into a cartoon first and foremost. When I was training at Liverpool Medical School, they taught me a lot of things, potentially how to deal with the pandemic, but not how to deal with being turned into a cartoon. So thank you John for that and thanks to the comms team because I think they've done a fantastic job of getting the messages across that we wanted to get, get to. In terms of the other councils, it, it's been remarkably similar. As I said, I thought I was going to get a bit of a kicking in terms of North East Lincolnshire around, around the Cleethorpes discussion. But, but it, it actually played out about, yeah, we, we need to think how we're delivering services across Grimsby, Grimsby and Cleethorpes differently. And as you'd expect, with, with something like this, there's a lot of different meetings I'd take it to, even in one council, when you multiply that by three. I think we've been going since the end of November and I carry on into, I don't know, probably March with presenting. So I'll come back to you. But generally it's, it's been received very well. Lots, lots of arguments about understanding the, the geography at a, at a more granular, granular level. But hopefully also articulating and arguing better for Greater Lincolnshire to get some more money in.
Excellent, thank you. And just for your noting for reference, North Lincolnshire, Scunthorpe, which is an industrial town with various air things, but what it is known for is the garden town of the north. And it has got a massive park that stretches right through the whole of the town that is stunning. So it does have green space as well. So it's just, they are around us. Just got to go and have a walk and find them. Thank you very much Derek. So we'll progress now on to seven, substance misuse. And now I'll welcome Simon Gladwin to the, and Derek, you...
Yeah, if I could just introduce the, the item and then I'll pass over to Simon. So I think scrutiny had asked for a report to, to look at some of the performance around our substance misuse services. So Simon's pulled together a report and we can go through the detail there. But just to pick up previous conversations, the provision of specialist substance misuse treatment services for the population is statutory responsibility. Lincolnshire and in fact, North and North East Lincolnshire all commission the same primary provider, which is, we are with you, a registered charity. And they've been providing services across Lincolnshire since 2002. The substance misuse treatment service delivers specialist drug and alcohol services. So it's important to recognise it, it does both. Often individuals will have challenges with both, but sometimes it's just one or the other, to adults and young people and reaching in the region of 3,000 service users per year. We also cover some of the more complex, wider services that people with alcohol and substance misuse and dependence need. Things, mental health services specifically, areas like dual diagnosis that we've talked about before in terms of, in terms of scrutiny. areas like dual diagnosis that we've talked about before in terms of, in terms of scrutiny. We have a new strategy, uh, From Harm to Hope, which is a, a 10-year substance misuse strategy, and, um, it, it's really positive that the government are investing additional funding through that programme. Important to recognise that in, in terms of liberating that additional funding, we must continue to spend the amount that we're already spending, otherwise we don't get any addition, the additional funding. This, this was a government stipulation. So we, we need to spend what we're spending and obviously get the best outcomes we can with that in order to liberate that, that additional spending that will allow us to, to deliver on some of those, those wider services. It's a recovery service. We've talked before, I think, at scrutiny, that historically substance misuse services tended to be about maintenance, and then that changed a number of years ago, and now we're, we're looking at a recovery service and Simon will go into and pull out some of the key points, points there really. And you'll see in Appendix A, the, the, the service is performing well overall. Contract, the annual contract review is in progress, uh, generally a low, medium risk area. Clearly people who, who access the services are often high risk, but that's managed really well. So generally, uh, we, we are, we are, um, commissioning a high quality, uh, service by a very well respected, uh, service provider. I think they were good on their CQC rating, very, very close to outstanding, and, and certainly we want to work with We Are With You over the next few years to, to move them up to an outstanding rating in terms of service provision. I'll pause there, I'll pass over to Simon. Simon's our lead in terms of commissioning within public health and has forgotten more about substance, substance misuse services than I'll ever know. He'll pull out some of the key points and then, um, very happy to answer questions.
Okay, and I'll, just before you start, Simon, I will welcome Rachel West, who is also on Teams, uh, who's our contract manager for this. So, Simon, over to you then.
Thank you, yeah. At the, the previous committee meeting, you, you, you asked us to look a lot more closely at the successful completions target that we have, uh, because we, we presented a paper at the previous meeting that said that actually the service was performing well, but actually when you look at the council business plan, the target that's within the business plan, we'd missed it, uh, in, in a number of quarters consecutively, and realistically, it was, it was wanting some explanation of, of why that is. So what we've done is we've looked very, very carefully at the, the, the successful completions plan in particular, but also all of the other areas that the, the contract isn't, isn't performing to. The successful completion one, as you reminded, it's not, it's not a simple answer. There are a number of factors that have, that have affected the successful completions target. The first one mainly is the fact that the numbers coming into treatment, uh, have gone up. Uh, in Lincolnshire, they've gone up by 23.6% in the last couple of years. That's, that's a significant number when you consider that nationally they've only gone up 12.25%. So it's, it's double, we're seeing double the amount of people coming in for alcohol treatment as an increase, as what, as what they are seeing nationally. So if you look on page 47 at figure one, it shows you literally how, how the, the numbers coming into treatment have just gradually been going up, uh, each quarter. The dip that we saw, uh, was during the pandemic, uh, when obviously it was much more difficult and people sort of didn't access treatment quite as, quite as readily. Uh, figure two on the bottom of page 47 gives you a little bit more detail around that, so it, it zooms out, I suppose. Uh, but what it does do, it illustrates the fact that the number of completions that we've had, the blue bars at the bottom, have stayed fairly consistent all the way through, um, over the last few years. So that's the number of people that have been successfully discharged, successfully completing treatment. That stays static, yet the number of people coming into treatment has continued to go up and up and up. What the end result of that is, the percentage of people exiting treatment successfully has gone down. We're actually exiting just as many people as what we were before. We weren't investing any more money into the service, we were, we were investing the same amount of money, we were getting the same amount of outcomes, but the number of people coming into the service was greater, therefore the actual target has dropped. And it's dropped more than the national average because we've got more people coming in than the national average. So when we were always comparing it against the national average, we've dropped below that further and further because of our own success to a certain extent. There are other, there are other areas that have impacted on the, on the target as well. The pandemic has, uh, has affected the, the type and, uh, the, uh, the number of people coming in. Uh, what we are seeing now is, uh, a, a, a much higher level of, uh, middle-aged, middle-class people coming in with more severe and more complicated issues around alcohol than we've seen previously. Previously, they would have come in with, uh, what we would have classed really as moderate issues that were relatively easily resolved. Now they're coming in with more complex issues that are more dependent, that are needing detoxification and, and more intensive treatment. The end result of that is more of them drop out, more of them are not successful first time round, uh, and have to come through and do it again, which again affects your successful completion rating. A third factor that's affected the successful completions is around the workforce challenges that we've had. Um, you know, wages have not gone up with, uh, massively over the last, over the course of the contract. Some of our competitors, um, have, have had more funding than what we've had, and the, the ability to recruit people has been a challenge. That's not just been a challenge locally, that's been a challenge nationally. You know, we're not the only council that is having an issue with recruitment. So what we've done, we've done a lot of work around that recently and we have addressed that. We've, we've looked at, at wages within the service and looked at how we, we, we fund the service internally, uh, and changed that and, and, and reviewed those wage packages, reviewed, uh, their recruitment policies and processes, and actually the end result is that most of the posts have now actually been successfully recruited too. So that is not so much of an issue, but because we have quite a lengthy training process when somebody new comes in, it's going to be, uh, a, a number of months before we see that impacting on the, the delivery of services. The, the last and final element that was impacting on the, um, successful completions was around, it, it's, it's almost, uh, a, a, a success story that's made an impact on this target, in the fact that the One New Lincolnshire service that we've got, uh, the number of people accessing that over, uh, recent years has gone up and up and up, which is really, really good. They are, they are picking up an awful lot of people with, with alcohol-related issues that would normally have accessed treatment services, and they are addressing those at a much earlier level, a much, much quicker, um, and, and that's really, really good and a very positive thing. The, the negative side to that is the fact that they're not coming into treatment, therefore we don't get any recognition through the National Drug Treatment Monitoring System for that, for that cohort of people.
If I can just, just jump in on that one. Um, scrutiny will remember that one of the things that, that you supported was, uh, One New Lincolnshire, which is our integrated lifestyle support service that covers stop smoking service, but it also covers things like weight loss, physical activity and, uh, low-level alcohol, uh, challenges. And, and what Simon's just articulating there is that the low-level alcohol support has been very successful, that it, very good at it. It's cost-effective to come back to previous conversations because One New Lincolnshire can provide that support because it's not specialist dedicated support that We Are With You provide, which is understandably at a unit cost level, far more expensive because, um, that they are specialists. And so the people coming through We Are With You are the people who need that specialist support, the unit cost is bigger. So in effect, what we're seeing is more people coming through the service and, um, the people who historically would have come through the service and would have successfully completed very quickly and relatively easily on even coming into the service because they're going somewhere else and we're providing a more cost-effective service. So We Are With You are dealing with the more complex problems. And, and again, that, that hasn't been reflected in the setting of our successful completion targets, which is why, out of all of the greens, because if you look in the, uh, Appendix A, there's an awful lot of green there, but the red there, that's partly why it's reflected.
And that also sets us slightly apart from some of the other areas that we're, we're compared with, in the fact that they don't necessarily have a one-use service that is, is, is doing that early prevention work, uh, that is, that is stopping people needing specialist services like the, 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 We Are With You service that we've got. If we were to look at representations, for example, which is one of the main ways that we monitor the contract, uh, the representations looks at the cohort that are discharged successfully and how many of them come back within a six-month period after discharge. Uh, and that's nationally, so they could turn up anywhere in the country. Um, and, and of that, you know, we're, we're doing better than the national average in both, uh, alcohol and drug, uh, successful representations. So when we look at the, how the contract's performing, for an outcome basis, it's actually performing really, really well. But from a successful completions, it, it doesn't look like we are, but it's, it's due to all those other factors. The other areas that are, uh, are red within Annex A, uh, and Annex A is page 55 of your, 55, 56 and 57, I think, of your, uh, report, uh, the successful completions we've done. The vaccinations one, we are a victim of our own success to a certain extent with this one, in the fact that we've vaccinated that much of the population. There isn't actually a huge amount of the population of the, the substance misuse population that are accessing treatment or needle syringe programmes, uh, that are left to vaccinate, therefore a lot of them are declining that. And the number of people who are engaged in employment and education, that is a very high target that we've set for them. Nationally, we are in line with national targets, we're in line with what, what's happening nationally. Uh, the target that we set was a very aspirational target, and this isn't necessarily a target that's a reflection of how this service does individually. This is a target that reflects how the, the system is doing, so how are probation doing? How is that linking in? It was, it was put in and designed to, to ensure that we had a lot of partnership working, and, and we're doing, we're doing quite well with it. We haven't met the target that we've set, but realistically, uh, that was a very aspirational target and I don't think we're ever likely to meet it, but I know, I would love them to, but I'm not sure that I will be able to.
I think that's me.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, it, in some sense, the figures do sort of swing about a bit and get a bit sort of confusing. You know, when you sort of look at sort of the outcomes of like the recovery to the volumes going in, there seems to be sort of, you know, what have you got, 54 people completed the programme and, uh, on the recovery, and then below that, this is page 45, table one, you've got 699 going in by the looks of it. And I think it's just sometimes the way the figures are sort of projected or highlighted that seems to sort of, I suppose there is quite an area of fallouts where people sort of start a programme and then drop out the programme, is there? Inevitably.
Table one is looking at the recovery service, so, uh, the, the service that we've commissioned after the treatment service. So what we've, what we do, we were very good at, we're very good at getting people drug-free. What we weren't very good at was keeping them drug-free. The recovery service helps us do that. Uh, over the, it was brand new in 2016 when we first commissioned it, we didn't have anything like that. There was very few of them in the country, in fact. But now it's been going for a number of years, and as you can see over between 2018 and 2022, we've gone up from, you know, 300 odd people to nearly 700 people in, engaged with that service. So that recovery service means that there are people that are in there that are either abstinent and very close to, to, to leaving treatment or have already left treatment and need some support, able to be able to reintegrate back into society and manage, manage their lives. And, and that's, that's really, we're quite pleased with that.
I think one of the, the important things to recognise here is that, um, getting people into services is absolutely vital. It's fantastic if we can get, uh, people through the service, uh, completely recovered and therefore no longer need a service. But it's equally as important that people who are in a service who need it, we can continue to provide that because it stops all of the obviously negative impacts of somebody, uh, who, who isn't in the service but has substance misuse or alcohol problems. So, so they're both positives, they're both the right thing to do. The ideal is to, to get people through a service and, and recover. But as, um, we all know, a lot of service users have complex, um, other health problems and that requires a lot of work with our partners, as Simon's already mentioned. So it's keeping them in as much as, uh, successful completions, the two go hand in glove.
I, I would also, sorry. I, I would also, as I guess, the, 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 the reason why our representation rate is so good is because our recovery service is working quite effectively, uh, and, and stopping those people then lapsing, relapsing and coming back into treatment.
No, it certainly seems like they know what they're doing, which is a good thing, uh, and it's pretty impressive. Andrew?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to, um, just ask you a bit more about the staffing levels at the charity, um, because obviously there's some talk of low morale among the staff because of the shortages of staff that they had. How close do we keep an eye on their, uh, their staffing levels and, and what are the staffing levels now? Obviously it says they've got better, but our contract manager, what, what, how detailed is their knowledge of what their staffing is? That's basically what I'm getting at, because obviously if they are short-staffed, it causes all these other issues, so could you tell me a bit more about that?
Yeah, we, we, we've got a lot of detail, if you like, I know exactly how many staff they've got. Uh, the, the contract manager that works for Rachel, who's on Teams, uh, monitors that on a quarterly basis. Um, we, we have increased that quite considerably over the last couple of years with all the grants that have come in from central government. As, as those posts have been recruited to, we're, we're, we're made aware of what's being recruited to, what's still vacant, uh, and what current vacancies we've got. So I think if we'd gone back a few years ago, we, we probably weren't that sighted. I think now we've got a lot of detail around exactly what is in place, where it is, um, and where we've got any gaps. So at the moment, it's looking very, very good, uh, but we are just going into another round of recruitment with another new grant that's just come in, so there's going to be some new vacancies.
I, I think overall it's an improving picture. We have had challenges. I think it's a reflection of the, the labour market at the moment, it is difficult to recruit to a whole range of different, um, services that the council wants to recruit to. And for example, we talked about social care earlier, it, it, it's a difficult market and we have a finite budget, comes out of the public health grant, we've, um, been as efficient as we can within that budget because we spend that budget across a whole range of services. So without throwing a lot more money at it, it, it is, it is a challenge, um, but it is improving and something with Simon and Rachel, they're, they're, uh, constantly in conversations with We Are With You. I think one of the other areas there is that, uh, both North and North East Lincolnshire also use We Are With You, and there, there have been situations where, you know, it's been Robin Peters to pay Paul. One option as we move forwards, if we go with a Greater Lincolnshire public health function or we go, uh, as part of the devolution approach, would be to look at, um, going out with either one big contract or one contract framework with three lots, where We Are With You, if they were successful, can, can balance it a bit better. Um, so, so we are looking at those, some, some of those options as we go forward.
Yeah, thank you. My, my question, and you've answered it, was how detailed an eye are we keeping on it? And it's reassuring to know that you have got a handle on it rather than just taking somebody's word for it. That's basically what I was getting at. Thank you.
I have exact numbers.
Rob?
Uh, thanks, Chairman. I was just wondering if you could say a little bit more about dual, dual diagnosis and the situation there. Did, did I hear you say that there's been an increase of, uh, numbers with dual diagnosis?
We've, we've had a, a huge increase of referrals, uh, through, from the mental health services through to, to treatment services. That's primarily down to, to two posts that we put in, uh, sort of 18 months, two years ago, nearly two years ago now, uh, where we put one, uh, that is two We Are With You workers, one based with LPFT in Lincoln, one based with LPFT in Boston, uh, and between them, they both cover Grantham as well. And, and they work for, work for our, our provider, but are based with the mental health provider, raising awareness within their services, raising the links within those services, ending multidisciplinary meetings, and, and therefore the referrals have gone from being virtually none to, to in the hundreds. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's, we've got some way to go. I wouldn't say we're there with that, we've got more work to go, we have some papers going forward to the ICB in the next month or so around some additional funding that we're asking them, them for. And, um, yeah, we, we, we're going in the right direction, but we've got a little bit of a way to go yet.
Derek, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I, I'm sure scrutiny, you, you'll remember that the dual diagnosis issue was something that, that I, I flagged up when I, when I came, and we've been working with, what was the four CCGs, then the one CCG, now the one ICB? Because somebody who's got mental health, enduring mental health problems and substance misuse challenges, we're falling between the stools. And, and what we, we had is a, a programme, and as Simon's described, it's worked really well. It would be really helpful if the recommendation from scrutiny was that the council side, It would be really helpful if the recommendation from scrutiny was that the council side, we continue to fund and actually we're increasing the funding because of the ten-year strategy, that the integrated care board and the NHS mainstream their funding as well for dual diagnosis, so that we've got an integrated model that helps people who need both sides of that equation, because we need to get them into treatment, we need to provide the right sort of treatment, and there's no one provider can do all of it, and then hopefully over time exit that individual, but if not, we're providing ongoing treatment and support. That would be really helpful.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, then Mike.
I've got a question for you, Derek, actually, rather than about the service itself. Simon was talking about the increase in numbers that we've seen post-pandemic coming in. I am a novice-ish at this, I am, no, novice at alcohol sadly, but novice at the service. I am assuming that you're actually seeing the minority of people with issues, and a good substantial amount of the population who do drink too much are kind of turning a blind eye and not really coming forward for support. What does that mean, Derek, in terms of, we were talking about long-term strategies for health moving forward? Assuming my assumption is correct, what does that mean, do you think, for Lincolnshire, if we're looking at a substantial number of people who do have alcohol issues and alcohol problems but who are not coming forward to help? And do we know what proportion of people are likely to be sitting on those problems and doing nothing versus those who are coming forward?
Yeah, Simon's just going, he knows, so he's probably got those figures in his head, which I feel bad about because I do like figures, and I haven't got those figures in my head, but you're absolutely right. There will only be a proportion of people who are drinking to harmful levels who come forwards. They might come forwards to their GP, the GP will then probably refer them into We Are, One U Lincolnshire, depending on the level of alcohol use. It will only be the more serious levels that come into We Are With You, but between One U Lincolnshire and We Are With You, we are providing a good service, but there's no doubt that there is an increase in alcohol consumption. There was through Covid and lockdown, we know that, that will play through, alcohol plays into raised blood pressure and cardiovascular disease, but it also is very strongly linked to a number of cancers as well. So the more that we can do to raise awareness of alcohol, you know, for those of us doing Dry January, for example, trying to reset the relationship with alcohol is really important for, I would argue, the UK population, we have an unhealthy relationship with alcohol, and it's a generational issue. I think we've done quite well with some of the younger population, their relationship with alcohol is different, but as Simon said, We Are With You are seeing an increase in more middle-aged, probably middle-class, predominantly women, but not just women, who are drinking to excess. I'm not looking at anybody, I'll look up in the air just to avoid us to get told off, but there is an issue there, and we need to surface that issue and provide support for those individuals to access services, absolutely. Otherwise, we will see the impact over the coming year.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Very interested in what you've said about young people and alcohol. My eldest child is twenty-three, and my second eldest is twenty, and then I have a seventeen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, and there is a marked improvement in the attitude of my seventeen and fourteen-year-old compared to what the attitude was of my twenty-three-year-old when she was seventeen. Totally different attitude. I'm not quite sure why and how, but whatever is going on is, yeah, it's not me.
I think generations are evolving fast, and, you know, the young generation can't afford to go to the pub like we did and all those sort of things, and actually supermarkets and the deals actually, in effect, contribute to sort of buying lots of cans of beer and going home, and sort of in some sense, we're encouraging other cultures to develop as we change in our lifestyles. Derek?
One of the real privileges and benefits of working across the three councils is North East Lincolnshire carry out a survey of school-aged children on their lifestyles and behaviours, which I would love to do across Lincolnshire. And what we've seen, and they've done it over a number of years, and you see a marked reduction in the number of younger people who are interested in and using alcohol. So there is evidence in North East Lincolnshire that that is definitely reduced, and we would hope, and we are seeing nationally those figures as well, so I think there is a generational issue, that will play through, and we've got to do everything we can to reduce that level of alcohol consumption, but hopefully we'll see, like we have with tobacco consumption, a reduction in our younger people, and that bodes well for the future.
Yeah. Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse my ignorance, but what training do the staff need in order to be members of your organisation or members of One Lincolnshire?
There's a whole package of training that people go through that takes quite a number of months after the sort of first start. That will include training around the substances themselves, so they go into a lot of very detailed training around that, but also they do training on institutions who's motivated interviewing, cognitive behavioural therapies, solution-focused brief therapies, and also trauma training, now they all do trauma training as well. So there's a whole raft of different skills that they need in order to be able to sit down with somebody and fully understand the complexities of somebody that's using drugs or alcohol.
Thank you for that. So you don't necessarily have to go to university in order to do this work?
No, sometimes it's more about having the right person than necessarily the right qualification. A lot of people that work in this area may well be former service users, for example. Nearly all of the people that work within our recovery service are former service users who lead by, are experts by experience. That, a lot of people that work in the service also have been to university and have degrees. So there's a whole mix of people that vary from academics through to experienced, from services previously.
What are you actually doing at the moment to go out and actively recruit more staff?
There's been a whole recruitment package that the service has gone through, especially one of the areas that we were particularly struggling with was along the east coast, so Skegness, Boston and Spalding, we were struggling in all those areas. The latest recruitment drive that they've had has been successful in recruiting to all the vacant posts that went out. So the only ones that are currently vacant are the new ones that we've got with the new grants that are coming through from the government.
Thank you. Experience does contribute well to resolving some of the issues, that's for sure, so it's good that you've got a good selection of people involved on that. I've got Tracy, Trevor, then Mark.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to see the report, I was one of the ones that was, I suppose, quite challenging at the last meeting in regards to the service. This report doesn't really give me anything more, to be honest with you. With respect, it in fact leads me to have more questions than actually probably what I did at the start of it. I can't help but strongly feel that, you've just commented, Derek, that you feel very positive about the service. I'm sorry, I don't share that view at all, I feel things have got very stale, and I really hope when the contract is due that we really do go out and look at other providers very strongly, and I hope that we're not sort of taken on a route because we are in a joint as great a Lincolnshire, I hope that we don't just look to go at that route. Working through the paper, I would question on page forty-three that we've reached three thousand people, what counts as that? What makes that person become a touch point? What level do they have to have received from the service to actually become one of those figures would be an initial question that I would have. Would that count as someone even sat in a classroom and had, you know, some kind of talks or something like that? On page forty-five, only fifty-four, and yes, we've talked about the fact that it's a recovery service, the Recovery Academy, but still only fifty-four people completing that programme in 2001, 2022, I don't feel is any part congratulatory at all, and find that it's quite an embarrassingly low figure, if I'm honest. I think there's a number of, sad to say, but almost red herring figures within it. If we look at 2001, 2022, the recovery service has had two hundred and fifty-three people attending groups, hundred and seventy-eight accessing mutual aid, and then the regular check-ins with five hundred and sixty-two. I would question, how many of those people are crossovers in those groups actually? Because someone receiving the regular check-ins, are they also receiving the mutual aid? So is it actually, leading us to suggest there's three high figures there, but actually, is it actually talking some of the same people? Again, the trade figures in regards to the increase in alcohol during lockdown, of course the trade in figures are going to have gone higher during lockdown because you couldn't have the sale of alcohol in pubs and things like that, so that was going to go up. So again, I'm not sure it's a figure that really needed to be in the report that gave anything other than to try to suggest that the alcohol had gone up so much. I'm sorry to go on, but on page forty-six, the performance indicators in there, yes, we can say, great, twelve performances are hitting target within that, but actually, what's the value in some of those? So the waiting times under three weeks, yes, brilliant, that we're getting in touch with people quickly in that less than three weeks, but actually the reality is, what is that contact? Is it a one call or is it that they're sat in front of an advisor? So it's that detail that I'm needing underneath that to actually truly mean, are they getting help within that first three weeks? The successful completions, I can't quite understand our low figures there as a target, to be honest with you. Derek, you've mentioned the dual diagnosis being extremely important and that crossover in regards to mental health, yet we have a figure of the number of dual diagnosis engaged in the substance and mental health treatments of, we're aiming for higher than five percent? Is that really what we're going to be saying is a green target that we're satisfied with? Again, find that very hard to understand. Increased percentage of clients accessing services through hospital settings, again, I would like to understand more about that, why would we be having that as a target? Why would we be looking at that? You know, we are apparently employing an equipped service to do the in-depth, so why are we encouraging and having that monitoring in regards to the hospital settings there? So there's quite a lot there. Increase in percentage of clients engaged in treatment and mutual aid, the target there is greater than twenty percent. So what other options are there for that client other than being engaged in treatment or mutual aid? I wouldn't have thought there's any other options, so where is our target of twenty percent? I probably will stop there and let you come back, but I have got some more points as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the most sensible thing to do is potentially have a separate conversation so that we can go through the detail with your councillor Carter rather than try and answer all of those together. I think just a couple of things to pull out. Some of the performance indicators are nationally dictated, this is a national model and therefore that's why we report on them. I probably agree on some of them, they're not ideal, but the money that we receive is predicated, and the additional money that we will receive is predicated on a core dataset that we have to use. So again, we can go through the detail of that. In terms of We Are With You, as I said, they are a good CQC-rated provider. Generally at a Lincolnshire level, we pay less and get less than average amounts, and we get average, if not slightly better than average, outcomes, so that's efficient. Whether we should put more money in, I think is a debate, but clearly there's a challenge there. In terms of the recommissioning process, just to provide assurance, we will go through the proper ODU reprocurement process. Whether that is done at a greater Lincolnshire level or a Lincolnshire level only is obviously, will be a lead councillor and portfolio holder decision, but we will go through the appropriate process and it will go out to market. It depends on what the market is as well, and then we'll look at it at that point, and we will come through scrutiny as we always do with significant recommissioning processes. But I guess the number of it is, happy to sit down with Simon, yourself, we can get We Are With You in the room as well to go through some of those details because there's always going to be questions and challenges there.
Thank you. Trevor, then Mark.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree completely with what Sarah said, I think in terms of when we hear about the service, I think the service is doing an excellent job, but my concern is that we're only scraping the surface, and in my ward in particular, substance misuse, alcohol misuse is prolific, you know, parts of my ward, every single street, there are issues around substance misuse. And the question is really, is it in terms of how do we raise that awareness? How do we get local residents, individuals to understand in terms of services being available and the pathway for those services in terms of referral and having that discussion and that conversation with people in terms of actually, yeah, services are available? Because it just seems to me that, you know, it's a common thing in terms of every household, in terms of, you know, either somebody will be overusing alcohol or substance misuse. I had the conversation around young people, we have different discussions in terms of parts of the area where I live, in terms of, you know, it's prolific in the schools, and especially around young people. I've got four children, I would describe myself as quite green in terms of substance misuse. I've got a lack of understanding, I would imagine a lot of people of my age group have. If you want to know about substance misuse, talk to young people, they'll tell you everything, and it's common, it's very common, and I think it's a really big issue for us in terms of, you know, this is the challenge, in terms of ten, twenty, thirty years' time, what's society going to look like in terms of we've allowed this to creep in, it is a creeping effect. It seems to be that, you know, most people are functioning on a daily basis with high levels of alcohol or high levels of substance misuse, and that creeping in effect is starting to have an impact on society in different ways. And in my town, you know, groups of individuals going into town centre, robbing out of shops and they've got a daily habit around drugs and alcohol, you know, it's not uncommon for people to steal up to five hundred pounds a day out of retail shops, that's a big, big issue. So it's okay for the people who want to engage, I suppose, in terms of recovery, it's about what we're doing in terms of those people who don't really want to engage, they're quite happy in terms of lifestyle, and that's the challenge, I think, for us, is, you know, the police don't really want to know in terms of the activity, they haven't got the resource, I don't think, in terms of dealing with the activity, but it is a real challenge for us, I don't know what the answer is, but it's a growing, it's a growing concern.
Derek?
Yeah, absolutely, it's statutory responsibility on a number of partners. I think one of the positives is that we do have the white paper and the additional funding coming through. The mechanism that the Home Office have asked for there is to create things called Combating Drugs Partnerships. So there's one across Northern Lincolnshire and there's one for Lincolnshire. I'm the senior responsible officer for both, but Lucy Gavins is one of our consultants in public health, leads in Lincolnshire, and it might be worth having a conversation at scrutiny around Combating Drugs Partnership. I know we've already brought the paper, I think, here, but we can bring a further one. But you're absolutely right, it's multifaceted, multi-agency, absolutely, children, young people education is important in this area. A lot of what we are statutorily responsible for is treatment services, and that's why we've obviously brought the paper today, but it's, yeah, it's a cross cutter, and that's where the Combating Drugs Partnerships are supposed to fit in, and the police are a statutory member of those groups, and how they fit with our safer, stronger approaches is really important as well.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman.
I think I'm sort of on the same page as Tracy and Trevor, to be honest. Because when I sort of looked at the numbers and the explanation was, you know, we managed to see a huge increase in demand in recent years in comparison to the national average. I think Simon kind of partially explained that in that we're a little bit more positive proactive and we have other schemes than we used to have. And I immediately started to think of the iceberg, the fact that, you know, only a fifth of the iceberg is probably above the water level. The other four, four fifths is below the water level. And maybe all we've started to do is to uncover a little bit more of the iceberg. And I think it goes back to the point that Trevor was making, you know, you know, there probably are a lot of lawful people out there, lots of issues around substance substance misuse. And again, against a lot of people potentially quite happy maybe with their lifestyles. But in terms of history, I don't think this is anything new because, I I I lived in London in in the mid to late eighties, in South London, and you should sort of go up into past the central London. And I can remember when in sort of eight, eighty-six, eight, seven, eighty-eight, when the rave scene came along. And at that time, what young people were doing, they were basically replacing alcohol with ecstasy. I think that comes on to the point again, the ceremony. Well, okay, today's younger people, they may not be taking alcohol as much, but are they replacing it with ecstasy, with other things like the generation of the late nineteen eighties did? These these things often tend to be cyclical. I can remember going into, not only into nightclubs and pub toilets, when I would say, don't hang around pub toilets, but when 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 you're at clubs and pubs in the eighties, you used to go in and you'd see people openly snorting cocaine, taking ecstasy. I even had several workplaces, I was working in the city, in in the city, in a in a in a in a merchant bank, would you believe, actually seeing the remains of cocaine in the gentlemen's toilets, and this is this is mid to late eighties. So 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 I think the problem's always been there. And I think it's cyclical and different types of drug do come along. You know, we know in market towns through through county lines that market towns now are particular targets for for drug smugglers. You read evidence that some, I read a couple of years ago, that eighty, ninety percent of acquisitive crime in in terms of robbery, burglary, street robbery is related to people stealing the money to fund their drugs habits. So 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 I think that it's a probably, it's a massive problem. And that probably is the four fifths of the iceberg that we're not seeing. My sort of, and I think it's great, I mean, the report itself seems to be demonstrating that we're doing what we can. And, you know, we're probably as effective for, slightly more effective than other services across the country. My concern is, is similar to the previous being raised, that we're merely scratching the surface here and there's a tremendous amount of the iceberg that's still there. Now, I, it's 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 just another one of those big social issues that are there. And quite how we deal with it, I do not know because I think it is so multifaceted. There are so many different elements, elements to it. You know, it it's great that middle-aged, middle-class wine drinkers are coming forward for treatment. But my real concern is, and I think I think Trevor made the point about society, where are we going as a society with this level? Because I think, I I certainly know from just things I observe around Grantham, just a normal market town. You see things that, you know, I mean, I've, as I say, I'm not, you know, I I lived in South London. I can remember, I can remember getting off, in in certain parts of South London in the eighties, people openly was smoking cannabis on the streets and the police, and the police doing nothing. So, I mean, I I I've seen all this sort of stuff. I see it now in in Grantham, in a market town. And I dare be you, we could probably go out into central Lincoln, Boston, Grantham, any Louth, Skegness, any market town, a Friday and Saturday night, and and we could see this going on. And I, but the question is, and I guess it's a bit of a rhetorical question, how how do we deal with our four fifths plus below the water line?
Karen?
I just agree with what you said. I get approached, not regularly, but often enough by people who say, Karen, so-and-so happened the other day and it happened there, and I pass it on to the police. And I have to say as well, on my little delivery round as part of the area that I represent, I could tell you which house is stink of marijuana. And when you go around there, you know it's always going to be the same. But I think what's just as worrying actually is reports that I've seen in the media about it being, about it happening in Westminster, the use of cocaine. And and that's in on more than one occasion that I've seen that and in more than one media outlet, when people at the very top of our society, in government or or in opposition or whichever, are using cocaine and and not being too discreet about it, I think there's really a worry then. And I agree with you, it's it's in the years to come because cocaine makes your heart go really fast. So you end up with problems in that, you know, in that way. But I completely agree with the things that you've said. It it's everywhere.
I think before we get completely out of control, I think we we need, there's there's two lines here. There's recreational and then there's misuse. And actually, you have to respect recreational because if you don't have respect, and that's alcohol in its own right, and at the end of the day, we all know it's dangerous and they're all addictive. And if you overdo it, you end up going into the misuse category. And then you've got a headache on board. And actually, it's very easy to go from one to the other. Even I, looking at my alcohol consumption, you sort of get midweek and think, oh, I'll have a drink. Then you get to Friday and think, well, I've done the week now, I'll have another drink. And then you get Saturday night and think, well, it's the day off, so I'll have a drink. And then I do a roast on a Sunday and think, well, I need a glass of wine with my roast, don't I? So and suddenly, you've gone four nights of seven, the majority, just by justifying it to yourself. So I've gone down a route, start of the year, a dry January, smoke-free January, except for Saturday night, because I'm like, actually, I'm not going full hog. But what I've actually done though is actually started doing the gym. So otherwise, I will slink back into the old habits. So you have to actually change. And I think the key is for people to take responsibility. And if you start knowing that actually you're on the sort of drinking a bit too much, pull back, do something else, go for a walk. Because if you end up in the misuse category, you've got a headache. And actually, we have to try and solve it because the impact that it has on families and everybody else around it is normally quite enormous. And and I think what the work we are doing here is great. We're never going to hit the full iceberg, but we can only keep trying to work with those that want to come forward. And within this programme, you have to actually want to stop or change your lifestyle. Because if you don't, we can't, we can't force you to do everything. We can only put the tools in the way to help people along that journey. I think it's a fair comment.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I am not as disciplined as you. I just had to get a smaller glass, but it's a start. And I feel like I've made a big step just doing that. So I think, like you said, we can all do something and that's certainly helped me, just something as obvious as that. So thank you.
Yeah, good idea, Andrew. So Sarah, last word and then we'll wrap up.
This may not be the last word because I might just about to kind of say a bit of a grenade into the chamber. But I think I'm I'm really interested in terms of peoples, the the way they have identified the difference between recreational drugs use, as if it's a heinous crime and should, and obviously in some cases it is and all the rest of it, and and recreational alcohol consumption. Now, we've also talked about misuse compared to recreation. Now, if you look at, and this is controversial, I get it, particularly for the UK. If you look at other countries, they have a much less prescriptive, more relaxed view to certain drugs. And in fact, there may be some negatives to that approach, but there are also some distinct advantages as well. And I think an awful part of the problem that we have is, I'm not suggesting anything other than we actually have a more nuanced approach in terms of our language, in terms of drugs versus alcohol. Because we've sat here, I I'd like to know exactly who's completely teetotal in the room, but we have sat here with the attitude of alcohol, we'll all do that, okay? Drugs, absolutely not, nobody must ever do it, da, 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 da. And that isn't the reality. I won't mention the specific venue, but there was a venue in Louth where there was a fortieth birthday party over the weekend. It's a place for community hire. And there was evidence of cocaine use in the toilet after that party. This wasn't young people. This wasn't working class people out to cause, this was, this was a fortieth birthday party of people who were considered respectable people. And the party actually passed off quite peacefully, that there wasn't any particular problems and social ASB or anything like that. So I'm not saying say what to that. I'm just offering a challenge to the room actually in terms of what's the difference between somebody having a recreational alcohol issue with somebody who is taking marijuana recreationally, other than one's legal and one's not? Because in terms of what we're talking about, in terms of public health, I would argue substantially whether there's a huge amount of difference in impact. It's just the language and it's the mindset we use.
Okay, well, it's a very interesting topic, as we know, and it's complicated. And it gets worse when you have the underworld that sells things that actually isn't exactly what it is and causes addictions instantly and other issues and that sort of, you know. But I think all in all, I would say it's actually a good report. I think there are some issues about some of the figures because of they, as you say, there's a national reporting mechanism and all the rest, and it's just sort of cleaning up. Reality is, the contract comes up for renewal in March twenty twenty-four. We've had a good debate. You can take away the various comments and note it. Does it want extra funding? Yes, it does. Like most things, it's a preventative approach as well. And I think the fact that we do have the different organisations supporting and all contributing is a benefit. We'll let you redesign or reformat and reprocure. And we'll no doubt get an update because when it comes to reprocuring, it'll come back to us before it goes through to the executive. So we'll be able to see how you've and how you've read our comments and take the whole thing forward. So thank you for that, Tracy.
If I could just add, Chairman, obviously you've mentioned extra funding. And Derek, after I spoke on the paper earlier, you mentioned extra funding. Just to be very clear, I'm not saying about chucking more money at this contract. What I'm saying is expecting more and actually getting better value out of it. And and an example of that is, you'd said about the amount of completions or or successful ends. And you said, but we haven't put any more money into it, but but they're still keeping the the amount of them consistent. The reality is, we've set up a new service to take that low level out of it. They've also said about how they've got new members of staff in place, all of these kind of things. So to me, we shouldn't be satisfied with still the same number of completions. We should be pushing for more. So I'm not endorsing more money for it. I'm endorsing better value for money and better quality of work from it. Thank you.
Whichever way, they'll have to justify the whole existence anyway through bringing the paper back to us pre-going to the executive. And if they want extra funding, then they will make sure that they justify it. And it will have to be justified to even get anywhere near getting any. But you've heard all the comments, so we leave it with you and we'll see you back in, it'll be about a year's time, actually. So thank you very much for that. Right, we'll go on to De Winkor, Lincoln. You've got a very nice photograph in the presentation, I see, of Liz, Wendy and myself with Glenn. So.
Can I just say, I've got another meeting at two back in Louth.
Yeah.
Are you all right for me to hang on for another fifteen minutes and then I'll slip off?
That's fine. And I think most things in the report actually pretty much cover it all off. I think maybe actually it'd be quite good if we actually sort of went and had a look at it and just spoke to some of the people would be a good thing. In fact, I half wondered it's just whether we could have actually done a scrutiny meeting from there. We used to welcome scrutinies going off and doing, they've got meeting rooms there. But I think it would be quite nice to go and have a look because I still think, you know, it's a model that I know Glenn and Wendy do like, you know, and it does take the pressure off residential care costs.
Could I, could I just add, Mr. Chairman, as well, the video is excellent. It's absolutely inspiring and it shows it at its best, so it's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Right, well, rather than us sort of, do you want to just sort of welcome Emma and Dave?
Thank you. The the purpose, obviously, for the for the report today is to provide an update on on De Winkor since its opening last March. But what I thought would be quite useful was use this opportunity as well to just give a brief update on on the programme and the progress of the programme since since I last joined you. Next slide, please, Simon. So just as a refresher, the purpose of the programme is really to support the development of extra care and supported living for working age adults in partnership with the housing providers or district council. It's to look at maximizing independence and, as you mentioned earlier, around reducing that, those funding pressures associated with residential care. And obviously, together with all the other benefits that that such accommodation brings with it. Next slide, please, Simon. So there were currently two, what I would call, live projects at the moment. First one, that being the Hoplins-Sleeford and Preben Lane in Welton, both of which have have been presented to yourselves over the last couple of years and have been approved by our executive. And so, next slide, please, Simon, sorry. So the Hoplins, which is in partnership with Norca Stephen, will see a development of forty units of extra care for over fifty-fives and an additional twelve one-bedroom units for working age adults either with learning disabilities, physical disabilities or mental illness. The the scheme would be developed on a former LCC highways depot that we've transferred to to NK. Planning is due to be submitted this month. And providing all the necessary approvals are obtained, we are looking to commence construction in October this year for completion in March twenty twenty-five, if we can't bring that forward. Next slide, please, Simon. And so the next, the other scheme is the Preben Lane scheme in Welton, which is a partnership with Lace Housing and West Lindsay District Council, providing some section one oh six funding towards it. We will see sixty-two one-bedroom units for which the local authority have purchased twenty-five nomination rights. The scheme, I'm pleased to say, has been successful for Homes England funding. And we are expecting a planning decision, all fingers crossed, in just over a week. We will start construction by the end of March. And I'm pleased to say we've managed to condense the the construction time schedule, so we should see an opening on October next year as well. Next slide, please, Simon. So we are looking at future opportunities as well. And you've got the the pleasure of seeing me again next month when I'll be back to present the Market Raisin Scheme, which is a development of or repurpose of accommodation for for working age adults, so ten units for working age adults with physical disabilities, again, learning disabilities and mental illness. We're currently exploring further opportunity in Boston, Sleaford, Sleaford's Borden, sorry, Horn Castle and Lincoln and others as well. So moving on to De Winkor, which is the main reason I'm here. So it was approved back in, just as a bit of a recap, it was approved back in July twenty nineteen by the executive and is a partnership with City of Lincoln Council and sees one fifty-one bedroom units and twenty-two bedroom apartments for rent. We per, LCC contributed two point eight million to the scheme, which allows us to purchase nomination rights on thirty-five of those units, which I'm really delighted to say we've utilised all thirty-five. And the scheme is now full with a waiting list as well, which is fantastic. We started construction back in January twenty twenty, when the world felt a very, very different place to today. And we completed last March. And one thing myself and the project team are really, really keen to do is to take all of the lessons that we've learnt as part of that project, as it's our first one within the programme, and embed those in future developments as we move through our programme. Next slide, please, Simon. So the scheme caters for a variety of different individuals with a variety of care and support needs. And therefore, it was it was really important that the project team kind of designed the accommodation to suit. So there's there's all sorts of different features, from a sensory garden, and and you'll see images across. and you'll see images across each floor of the scheme that have been submitted by as part of a photo competition by members of the local community. And that just helps with wayfinding for, as part of the dimension-friendly design. More to please to say, the scheme was successful for a Secure by Design Gold Award. And that was the only gold award that was awarded during last year as well. The restaurant and hairdressers on site, so if you're passing, there's a lovely restaurant and cafe. If you want to stop for a coffee, by all means, you'd be more than welcome to do so. And they are both operated by local community businesses. So the restaurant owners were operating out of their home kitchen on the next street to the scheme, and were looking to develop at just the same time as Dewent Court was being built. And they've managed to really grow their business and expand that, and now actually have been able to take on additional staff as well through the opportunity that Dewent Court's provided. Next slide please, Simon. So as a result of the development, multiple homes across the county have been released, whether that be council-led properties via City of Lincoln or other district authorities, or whether that's privately owned properties that have been put onto the market for sale, providing other Lincolnshire residents further housing choices as well. Next slide please, Simon. Something that we're really keen to do, as part of the project team, we're really keen to do was to support the local community and look at as much social value that we could bring from the development, and to add wider benefits, really not just to the tenants of the scheme. So seventy-two of the construction team that were appointed were Lincolnshire residents, and twenty percent of those of the construction team were actually within five kilometres of the scheme development itself. There was multiple apprentices that were involved in the construction, and further jobs also added as part of the ongoing management and support of the scheme as it operates today. Next slide please, Simon. So as I mentioned previously, the scheme is now fully occupied with a waiting list, with a mixture of different care and support needs being catered, and a mix of different ages, to be honest, and backgrounds of the tenants, with the youngest tenant being fifty, who's an ex-army veteran, and the oldest tenant being ninety-four, which I think is amazing, moving at that age. So, the scheme has had a really positive impact on the tenant's health and wellbeing, and has really helped some individuals that I've spoken to personally as well in some of their isolation, and to improve their mental health and wellbeing. So hopefully, it sounds as if you've had the opportunity of double look at the video, which I think does much more justice than I can by, you know, the accounts of the residents that were within the scheme, and their views and their feelings towards their new home. And I'm positive and hopeful that the remaining of our schemes throughout the programme will continue to see positive impacts on the Lincolnshire residents.
Okay, Wendy.
Yeah, just quickly, because I am going to have to shoot off to another meeting back at home. But I just want to thank Emma for all her hard work, because Dewent is fantastic. And if anybody wants to go, if you just drop Emma an email, we can get, you know, probably get half a dozen at a time to go, because it is very busy. Other than obviously you can pop in for a cup of coffee, but it is a fantastic scheme. And I can't wait till we get the others two going as well. Very passionate about this, because it is, it's just like, well, it's just home from home, and it is fantastic. And also, we've got washing lines sorted now, so people can dry their knickers, which was a very big worry of mine.
Well, I was actually thinking, instead of actually going there for a meeting, actually, at the end of our next meeting, if we actually finished at about half twelve, we could actually just go for a bite, well, there's the coffee shop there. And if we find out numbers, there's no reason why we can't just go and have a sandwich and a look round after the next meeting on the twenty-second of Feb. And I think that would perhaps be the easiest way for those that want to go. We'll organise a trip after our committee meeting and have a little sandwich and a chinwag with all the, some of the people there, and get a look round. So, we'll let you organise that, Simon, with Emma.
I think it's a great idea, but there was a councillor development session here immediately after. I can't even body it's on.
What are they, what, all right, well, okay, well, we'll have to. Yeah, okay, well, we'll look into that. So it'll either be the next one or the one after. I think it's the fair way of looking at that. So, okay, any questions? Mike?
Yeah, it all sounds a very good success story. What feedback have you received from the residents?
So I've probably visited the scheme since it opened, maybe ten to fifteen times now. Because I think it's really important that we track that and understand the difference that it's made in those individuals' lives. And there's one gentleman that sticks in my mind, I have to admit. He's fifty, as I say, he's an ex-army veteran, and he spent a considerable amount of time in residential care, which is definitely not something that was suitable for his needs at all. And it's completely and utterly changed his life. He now comes, you know, he went from sitting in a room, he wouldn't talk to anybody, he was very insular. And he's completely come out of his shell, he's on the residents' committee, he's helping to organise different activities. There's other individuals that have lived in their own properties who haven't been able to use their bathroom, for example, because their property just wasn't suited to their needs anymore. And that, again, has completely changed their life. So it has had a real positive impact. And I'm sure if you wanted to visit, you could hear those first, you know, firsthand, rather than from yourself.
Sorry. So we can't clash with the councillor develop meeting. And so I think we need to look at potentially the fifth of April. The gardens will look better, the flowers will be coming through, and the bulbs will look nice. So we will aim for the fifth of April then, to sort of, after this meeting, well, after that meeting, then we'd aim to go there for a little bite to eat. And I'm sure the council can sort that out while we have a tour round. And if we aim for that then, and then we'll circulate nearer the time how many and who's attending. So, if that suits everybody? Any other questions, or are we all happy? Very impressive, I mean, it is very impressive. I've been round it when it was opened up, and it's, you know, and I think it's a great thing what we're doing, sort of spreading these around Lincolnshire. And the benefits will come to fruition. So, yeah, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to our little tour. Thank you for coming, so. Okay, on that note then, Simon, it's over to you on the work programme.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Just to refer members of the committee to pages eighty-two of the agenda pack onwards. There are no changes to the next two meetings in terms of items being added. But the day services update will now be at the sixth of September meeting, and not the twenty-eighth of June. Just moving back to the twenty-second of February, I think all the items have kind of been touched on during the course of this morning, so there are four items on the agenda. And they include the residential care and residential with nursing care usual costs item, which is quite a significant paper. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, well, on that note, thank you all for coming, and have a good trip back home. Thank you.